I'm going to call the meeting back to order at 6:35. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Michael?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There were no actions taken in closed session. We have an approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board President announcements, other than the fact I now have titanium in my body, so I may actually ask to stop for a minute or two halfway through the meeting so I can stand up and walk around. We have no other board announcements, board president announcements tonight. Approval of the minutes, minutes of the special meeting of December 4th.
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Abstain for Linda and I?
Yes.
Minutes of the regular meeting of January 22nd.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of the regular meeting of February 12th.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. All right. Reporter, the superintendent.
Sir Vanabos, first of all, welcome back. And I think that tonight we have some great topics that we should have some fun discussion and really appreciate the efforts of all of our presenters tonight and the preparation that went into the items that we're going to put before you. I had the opportunity to attend a living history event last night. It was African-American Heroes at the PV Library. And I think it's something that our district can probably do a better job of as a whole in the future getting behind and supporting. After attending the event, it's just amazing the preparation that the kids put into the event, their complete dedication to being in character and being dressed appropriately for their parts and the research that went into their presentations. It is one of those things that really just warms your heart with these kids of all ages. And again, just another example of the work our PV Library does to reach out and to support students, in this case, not all PV students. But just another neat thing that our kids get an opportunity to participate in. I really want to get behind this differently next year as a district after seeing it. I've also been able to make some visits to school sites and to personally thank teachers that are getting ready to begin the math pilot, math textbook pilot. And that probably took some dedication on their part because not only did they have to say that they were willing to try something completely new at this point in the year, but also to attend pretty much a crash course in professional development and then to report back and to ultimately have to advocate either for the product that they used or accepted, a product that maybe they didn't get to pilot. But in any way, just the dedication that they're showing for our kids and their willingness to jump in and embrace something new. And finally, I'd just like to thank the board for the deep conversation that we had in the last board meeting. There were some meaty items. And we're going to be bringing back some recommendations at the next board meeting on March 12th with some recommendations based on the direction the board gave us at that meeting.
All right, so dive into mathematics placement?
I would love to dive into mathematics placement process. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Culverhouse in just a second, but first I want to thank the entire team. I think that some of the work that's been done this year, especially in the area of mathematics, which is not an area of anxiety just for Palace Verdes, but it's a statewide level of some uncertainty. And I think that the team has really done some great work to calm the waters. The things you're going to see tonight, too, weren't done in isolation. They weren't done by two or three people. They were done with every mathematics teacher in the entire district for every single thing you're going to see tonight, which is not common. The information on our website is a model and has actually been sent out to other districts to use as examples of how to inform community members. That began as early as December, some really nice work on the website. And finally, I think we're trying to strike that balance between our need to make professional recommendations and our belief that the family has ownership of their own children. I think you're going to see that reflected tonight in our presentation. So, Dr. Culverhouse?
Thank you, Dr. Austin. I'm going to have Michael Leeholt join me for this presentation. Very fortunate to have Michael as one of our TOSs this year. He comes to us with 17 years as a mathematic teacher. I always say math, he corrects me, mathematics. As we're getting the slide prepared in our presentation for getting to you, this process began back in September when we were reviewing the math sequencing that was developed last year to create an understanding of the identified pathways in our community. So if you can see from the chart for the next slide, coming up, it's coming, that our next step after reviewing the pathways was to establish a clear criteria so that teachers, parents, and students could understand that placement process. And this was evident when we had our first parent focus meeting. And the parents wholeheartedly agreed that they needed clarity on the math placement process. So you can see from the chart, we began the process in October 22nd. Ed Service began developing the criteria from October until November. And then we brought in our K-5, 12 math teachers, our intermediate counselors, our assistant and our associate principals as to review the criteria that was being developed. We brought that information over to the curriculum and guidance meeting, once again making revisions as we went, brought the revised criteria to our principal roundtable, that's our K-12 principals, and then we brought in our 6-8 math teachers. During that time, part of that criteria was the teacher recommendation, school recommendation, grades, and a type of a summit of assessment. So back in December, on December 4th, the teachers began building that summit of assessment. And Michael is going to address the details of how that came about. We then brought the criteria to the superintendent's cabinet, getting more input, making more revisions, and then brought in our grade five teachers to review the criteria. We brought the same focus, parent focus group back on the 15th and once again received great input from our parents. And then we, on the 18th of December, we put it out on our website. Teachers began developing the assessment in December. And although the actual assessments were complete in January, the details of the criteria and the content standards that were going to be covered on the assessments were posted on our website on December 18th. So as far back as December 18th. And then email blast was sent out to all of our parents on the 19th with links to the set criteria. So Michael is going to walk us through now on how we built that assessment.
So we started by giving all of the math teachers.
So we started by giving all of the math teachers in grades five through seven an opportunity to give input and come to consensus on the content that we were going to cover on each of the summit of assessments. We then brought in teachers in grades five through 12 to discuss the format of the assessments. We also came to consensus that we would give the same format for each of the assessments. The format that we chose, we wanted it to be comprehensive. And so we chose a two-session format where the first session would be 10 short answer questions and two extended response questions, all of which are available for partial credit for the students, and then followed by a second session of 30 multiple choice questions. And again, that's the same format for each of the assessments. The four different assessments that were created were an assessment for grade five, an assessment for grade six for both PVC M6 and PVC M6 Excel, an assessment for our PVC M7 students, and an assessment for our PVC M7-8 accelerated students. In December and January, that's the timeline when the teachers developed each of these assessments. And again, they were designed to be directly aligned to the content standards that the teachers agreed upon. And all of these content standards were instructed during the first two trimesters. Teachers drew from reliable resources to identify questions and then align these questions to our student population. Both the intermediate teachers and the elementary teachers then took the assessments, once they were written, and made final recommendations for revisions. The assessments were revised, and then guidelines and directions for administration were drafted through Educational Services and distributed to each of the teachers that were administering the assessments. And then, just as a follow-up, the PVC M summit of assessment is part of the criteria to recommend our students to our summer bridge program. So to touch upon that, that program is going to be designed to be 19 days long, and it'll be four hours each day. The content of the program is going to be aligned to the content that is taught in our PVC M7-8 accelerated program that is not covered in our PVC M7 program. And the course will run at all of the intermediate sites during the intermediate summer school window.
Thank you, Michael. And the administration process was very important to us because it was very important. And what we were hearing from our parent groups and all the other groups that we were talking with is the consistency. So letters were sent home prior to the test which was being administered this week. And the letters were explaining the administration of summit of assessment. We were mailed home to grades four, five, six, and seven. The information included the formative, the format of the assessment, the content standards that would be covered. And then we actually had a separate frequently asked question sheet for each grade level. And then there were different letters for each grade level. As Michael said, the administration was over two days and consistent for the multiple choice, the short answer, and the extended answer. All of the assessments will be graded by the classroom teacher. And then to ensure the consistency on the extended and the short answer questions, making sure that the rubrics and the teachers are on the same page, we are bringing our elementary teachers back on March 4th to the district. And then we were bringing our intermediate teachers back on March 5th so that we can make sure that there was consistency in the grading of the short answers and the extended response. The placement notification process, once again, another goal is to make sure that we are consistent. Fourth grade is a little different. This has been a past practice in our district for years where our fourth graders are skipping fifth grade math and they're going to the intermediate school to take their math course. Including them in this process so that we can ensure the consistency is that the parents were given the opportunity to either opt into the test or opt out of the test. And the teacher, the fourth grade students were given the test on the same time this week as everybody else. These are our double accelerated students. And that's a big skip for them to skip that fifth grade math content. But many, we have about 5% of our students that are doing that this year. So we do have students that are in that double acceleration. All of the students that are assessed then on the week of March 23rd will receive the recommendation for placement, a letter coming from their elementary school, and then also the student score sheet. The student score sheet is not just what percentage, 85%, 75%. It's a detailed score sheet that will outline exactly what they received on the multiple choice, and their scoring on the extended and the extended and the short answer essays. And this test that the fourth graders are taking is the fifth grade summit of assessment. So it's the end of that fifth grade course. Fifth grade, once again, looking at the consistency, all 10 elementary schools on March 20th will be sending home a letter in the mail. We decided we would send those home in the US mail. And in that mailing, they will receive the grade six scheduling request form. Now that's nothing, that's not anything different than we have done in the past. It's where the students are choosing their electives, they're choosing all of their other classes, and that will go home. The difference is that part of that recommendation will be their recommendation for placement, and once again, that individualized detailed score sheet specific to that student. March 27th, maintaining that consistency once again, is the scheduling request form is due back to the site. And that's past practice, what we have done. The difference is the consistency on April 17th. If parents want to override the recommendation, as Dr. Austin has been talking about, or Michael and I have been talking about, and our teachers, if they want to override that recommendation, it is a very clear form, a request for placement form. They fill that request for placement form, and it's due back to their current site. Strategically, those dates are set in motion because the intermediate principals need to know the numbers so that they can build their master schedules. All the request for placement forms will be honored by all three intermediate schools, and there will be a place for that student. Grade six and seven, you can see once again the consistency of the dates, the week of March 9th. The intermediate students will be, will receive their scoring sheet, and that will be sent home. Because the teachers will be grading the sheets, they're using it as part of their grading, and we felt that it would be important for them to have that scoring sheet sent home rather than waiting for that recommendation. The week of April 6th, this is past practice for our district, Ares generated a letter that has the scheduling request form, goes home to the parents. Included in that scheduling request form will be the recommendation for placement, very similar to the fifth grade. And then on April 17th, identical, if parents want to override that recommendation for placement, go on the website, the letters will be available at the site. They fill out that request for placement form, and then it's due back to the current site. So as you can see, beginning this process back in September, looking to be clear and consistent, and putting things on our website, getting letters out to our parents, being transparent, we began this process in September, and we're concluding it coming up now. And we're very excited because we're seeing the consistency of all the 10 elementary principals and all of our element, all of our intermediate principals. So now just open it up for our board for questions.
So I have four kind of questions or comments that are really not so much just about what you presented tonight, but really off of what happened last year. And I want to make sure that the public is clear, and I want to make sure that I'm clear. So, just so that I'm clear, the content that's on this assessment is going to be on information that was covered already in the first and second trimester.
The content's been covered in the first and second trimester for each of the assessments, and was posted on the district website on December 18th, and was decided in consensus by the teachers who are administering the tests.
Perfect. And I'm bringing up these things because these are some of the gaps we had last year.
I understand.
The summer bridge class is free for all students?
Summer bridge class is free for students who are in PVC M7 and enrolling in the class.
Okay, good.
Could you remind us what PVC M, whatever you said?
PVC M is Palace Verdes Core Math.
Thank you.
And there's no minimum number of students that can potentially be a part of Excel, meaning it's not like we're capping it with a quota. It's not a certain percentage. If every student in the district were to meet the requirements that are the suggested requirements for that grade level, they could potentially all be recommended if it worked out that way.
Right. That's why, that's why the dates are so strategical, so that the intermediate principals are building their master schedule around the numbers that will be coming to them.
Sure. And at the end of the day, with all of the recommendations that are coming through this, both formative assessment slash pseudo summit of assessment, because it's later on in the year, the parent ultimately can choose to have their child in whatever math they feel appropriate.
Correct.
Want to make sure those things are very clear. Thank you.
Hi, sorry, I have allergies or screwing up my voice. I had one housekeeping question. If parents choose, I get this question a lot from parents, if they choose to waive their child up and they don't take the summer bridge class, is that allowed? Or would you, do you have to take the summer bridge class?
We, I'll let Michael discuss that because we are encouraging it.
Okay.
Michael.
I just want to make sure I'm passing along the right information.
Let me just make sure that I'm clear on it. So if a student's in PVC M7, Palace Verdes Core Math 7, and they choose to not take the bridge class and would like to take Algebra I in eighth grade.
Correct.
Then they could fill out a request for placement form and take Algebra I in eighth grade. They'll be missing content.
Right. So it'd be up to them to figure it out on their own with a tutor or their really smart mom or something like that to...
Well, and we're currently...
Or dad, dad, yeah, probably dad.
Not in my house.
It depends on his house.
I'll tell you that we are currently looking at ways that we'll be able to provide something to the students that are in that type of situation.
Just like the worksheets online or something like that.
Correct.
Chapters in the book or something. And then one question I had, I appreciate what you're saying about being consistent across the district. I think that's a huge step for us. From my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that our middle schools did not all use the same textbooks and materials all year so far? Is that correct?
The state adopted textbook is still the current textbook. There's been, we're going to touch on the piloting process in a moment. So there have been some additional materials that have been used because there have been pilots in place since August of 2014. However, the standards that have been covered are consistent for the first two trimesters across the intermediate schools.
Okay. So you feel comfortable that whichever book or orange worksheets or whatever kids are using, that it doesn't make a difference in terms of how the results will? Or you won't know until you see the results of what went on this week?
The reason I feel comfortable about it is because the teachers are the ones that came up with the list of standards and agreed upon those standards, and the teachers are the ones that created the test. So they've seen the content that's on the test, so they know that it's content that had to be instructed by the end of the second trimester or by the start of this week.
Okay, that makes sense. And then the last question I had is, I was just going back to what the board did last spring when I wasn't on the board. And one of the things was, it said that the staff would present a budget proposal back for costs associated with the waiver process and all of the moving around that could happen. Is that something that's been thought about? Because I can envision something where you might think it's going to be a certain way, and then for whatever reason, the kids do much better or much worse, or more parents waive or less parents do. At all these grade levels, is there sort of a plan going forward to manage the cost aspect of it?
Dr. Austin?
I would love to take that. Again, first cycle through, we have to go with the feedback that we've received from parents about their experience with their kids. And one thing that came up over and over again was the practice of understaffing or overplacing kids in advanced classes and then weeding out, okay? So that's an artificial way of balancing classes. Our intent now is to, again, we go back to the strategic placement of dates. By going to the April 17th, our goal is to properly place students on the first shot, balance classes better on the front end, so that we're not having to play the artificial balancing game and trying to weed students out. So again, until you go through it the first time, I mean, so what we're using is history and research that shows that students who select into a more rigorous course are more likely to do well. It's in perfect alignment with students who select a reach college are more likely to stay and graduate from that college than those who pick a less rigorous college. But until we go through it for the first time, we don't know what the number of what we would call, you know, parent placements. First of all, we don't know what that number's going to be. We have some estimates on it. But we also don't know what number of students might, what our district here calls leveled down. So we're going to have to go through a cycle before we can really be accurate about what that impact is going to be.
So if kids at all four grade levels, right, the fifth, sixth, seventh, if they leveled down once they get into it, would that still be allowed? And then if someone shows up in September and wants to level up, that's what wouldn't be allowed because you need to turn the form in in the fall? I mean, in the spring, I'm sorry.
Well, I think that it would, within each intermediate school, you're looking at, I mean, that would be something that the teacher would be having a conversation with their parents about. The principal would be involved in that. Typically, what happens in a master schedule is that you build your schedule so that you have an accelerated class aligned with a non-accelerated class, so that you have flexibility for students to move.
So if there's a few at whatever school, they could do that. Okay, makes sense.
How are we going to partner our fifth graders as far as which intermediate school? Is it boundary oriented? You know, like, what children would go to PVIS if they're skipping fifth grade math? Would it be obviously, you know, Lenada Bay and Point Fasente? How are we going to do that?
I believe usually what we try and do is it's geographic boundaries to try and get the best placement for kids. And, you know, that's usually, I think, traditionally how we've done it in the past. If I can verify that for you.
Is there going to be a family component? You know, if for some reason, a member of the family is an eighth grader at some place, but it's not really the boundary of the fifth grade. I was just, I'm anticipating, you know, the convenience of, and I'm assuming that that class will be at the beginning of the day, so the fifth grader returns.
That's a, I mean, this is a...
That's accurate.
This is a past practice that has been in place. And as far as those pieces of it, I think they're going to continue the same way they have in the past.
And the transportation component is responsibility of the parent.
The parent.
If there's any issues with placement or siblings, we'll make sure we address that because our goal is to make it, you know, easy for the families.
I just want to commend you for the, since I've been on the board, I've been asking for a district-based assessment. And this is the first time it's happened. So the fact that the math teachers across the district were able to get together, it's unfortunate that it was driven by this assessment, but I, you know, however we got there, I don't really care. So I'm excited that it's here, and I'm equally as excited for us to be looking back next year. And really, I think the data we now have from our own district-based assessment will really be able to tell us some things. And it may even speak to some of the piloting that went on, and which curriculum seemed to do, you know, better or worse. Or it may just be a reflection on kind of where we have some areas of growth in different parts of the district, different elementary schools. So I'm very excited, and I want to commend the group for doing it.
I have one comment. I understand that we gave notice of the entire process by posting something on our website back in December. Then we also took the second step of mailing something as well, didn't we?
Yes. When we posted the information on our website in December, from me, I sent out, and our office sent out an email blast to all the parents. And within that email had a link to all of the standards, the content standards, the criteria. And then we sent a letter out just this last couple of weeks, explaining once again the administration process with the FAQs.
My experience with the post office hasn't always been the greatest the last year or two.
I'll have to say that we experienced that. We had anticipated that the letters would go out sooner, but the parents got the letters like, you know, four to five days before the assessment. So next year, we will make sure that there's a bigger gap because of that.
And so we actually have, one of the methods, I thought, in your presentation, had a mailing again, one of the notices.
On the 20th. The elementary schools will be mailing on the 20th.
So I would encourage you, at the same time, to consider doing an email to the parents, say, "Look in your mailbox" or this, so that there's a double check on the post office. Because unfortunately, the post office doesn't seem to be living up to their former standards.
Along the same lines, you said, I think the results would be sent home with the children. Usually, you know where those things end up, in the bottom of the backpack, under the moldy cheese and things like that. So again, an email just saying, hey, these are going home with the students this week, then it just eliminates phone calls to you about where that is.
It's a great recommendation. We'll make sure we do that.
I also want to thank you guys. This is precisely the kind of approach we expected, hoped for, prayed we'd get at some point to some of the issues we've had, not just the math issue, but other things we've had where we've had the right intention to do something, but the process wasn't as complete as it could be. Personnel issues, staffing issues, lots of reasons. Now we have those grouped in place. And please continue the good work because that's exactly, our expectations are high, and it's nice to see you're meeting our expectations. So thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a good team.
All right, Dr. Austin, next.
Maybe we should stop after that. That was pretty good.
I know. I don't think we should do the next one.
Good about that. Go ahead.
Well, it's great. I just erased my notes, so I'm going to go off the top of my head for just a second. But we're moving on to math textbook adoption, and again, an area where I think our process is a really good step in the right direction. So I'd like to just turn this over now to Dr. Culverhouse once again.
Thank you, Dr. Austin. This is another area of consistency that we are focusing on. And the teachers have been using the current math, and I think the teachers are ready for a consistency of a K-8 math adoption. I will be addressing the K-5 portion of the adoption, and then Michael will be addressing the 6-8 portion of the adoption. As you can see from the slide, this process also began back in 2014 when Ed Service and some of our teachers were reviewing, we reviewed six different programs back in the spring and the fall of 2014. We reviewed Math in Focus, Math Expressions, GoMath, Everyday Math 4, MyMath, and Envision Math. Throughout that process, we had a staff development day on the 30th, but that process continued because through the feedback from T...
because through the feedback from teachers, it would determine that four of these programs would be considered for evaluation. So through that feedback from teachers, we considered the Math in Focus, Math Expressions, Everyday Math 4, and then Envision Math. Now, unlike other districts of an adoption process, what usually happens in other districts is pilot teachers are chosen at each grade level, at each school, several at each tool, and then they're brought before the publisher. The publishers come in and they do a training for a select group of teachers. We had a wonderful opportunity this year to have all of our K-5 teachers hear from all four of the publishers on January 30th. Mr. Sharp came by and witnessed that. So the teachers rotated and heard from all of the presenters. We had already chosen our pilot teachers prior to that January 4th, so we brought our pilot teachers back in on February 4th, and at the end of January 30th, the grade levels got together, the kindergartners up to the fifth grade, and they did a very strategic ranking and feedback and great conversations about the recommendation. And through the pilot process and the pilot teachers, we considered that the consensus on the pilot selection was the Math in Focus and the Envision Math. We have 31 K-5 teachers who were in the pilot process. They have been trained. The pilot window will open on Monday, March 2nd through April 17th. We have 29 general education teachers, and they're piloting one of the two programs, and then we've also included one special education teacher for each program. We have a minimum of two teachers per grade level per program. The publishers have been very supportive, and they have been providing the training and support along the way. We will bring the teachers back at a midpoint for collaboration to discuss the pilot process. The publishers will be available yet to answer more questions when we bring them back at the midpoint. The pilot teachers will be doing staff presentations at the site, at all elementary sites, and then the non-pilot teachers will have an opportunity to observe the pilot programs, and the materials will be on and available at all the sites and then on the district office. The next slide, when Michael finishes talking about our 6-8, I'm going to show you the dates and the times for our community presentations. Then we are bringing back the pilot teachers on April 22nd. We will do a recommendation to the board on May 7th. Critical point of any part of adoption is the professional development. So you can see that we already have our professional development scheduled for May, another one on August 27th, January 29th, and then the spring of 2016. So that is the process of how we handled our K-5 adoption, and Michael now is going to discuss our 6th, 7th, and 8th adoption.
So the intermediate teachers have really embraced being involved in the adoption for our Palos Verdes Core Math 6, 7, and 8 classes. Starting in the spring of 2014, the teachers began reviewing seven state-approved programs, including Big Ideas, GoMath, Connected Mathematics III, Digits, Math Links, and Springboard, and California Mathematics. At the start of the 2014-15 school year, it was narrowed down to four, and those were, the teachers were trained, and it began implementation of those four pilot programs in their classrooms. They narrowed it down to Big Ideas, GoMath, Digits, and California Math. So throughout the fall, they received support from Educational Services as well as the publishers. At the January 30th Professional Development Day, all of the intermediate teachers came to consensus on solely moving forward with Big Ideas. So we're moving forward into a Big Ideas pilot window for March 2nd through April 17th, consistent with the elementary window. And during this time, it will be implemented in 10 different, it'll be implemented by 10 different teachers across all of our intermediate sites. The publishers are going to continue to provide support. We will continue bi-weekly communication with the teachers through Educational Services. An online forum is going to be provided to the teachers so that they are able to dialogue and critique the program amongst each other. Non-pilot teachers will have an opportunity for visits, for visiting pilot teachers' classrooms. We will have a community presentation, which will be discussed shortly, and materials have been ordered and will be available in all of the intermediate sites as well as the district office for the public to review. We're going to move from there into a final pilot teacher committee meeting, and here we're going to review the process that we go through, and we'll have a conversation about making our recommendation to the Board of Education. On May 7th, we'll make that recommendation to the Board of Education, and then we'll be following up with professional development similar to the elementary sites, specifically pointing out that in May of 2015, we'll run a full day of professional development as an initial training for the adoption. And the teachers, what that means is the teachers are going to leave prior to the summer with the materials and an initial training, and will be able to have time over the summer to prepare for the upcoming school year. And then even to follow that up, we will also begin a process for an Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II adoption this spring.
Thank you, Michael. The community review, working with the publishers, we think it's important to make sure that we have a review in the morning and also another one in the evening. The publishers will be returning. The materials will be available at each site and also at the district office, and you can see the schedule of the publisher presentations. All presentations will have an opportunity for questions and also feedback. We were, as soon as we, these have been verbal confirmations from our publishers. As soon as we get it in writing, I will make sure that we post this, and once again, the recommendation is to send it out to all of our parents to make sure that they have the opportunity to come and hear the presenters from each one of the publishers. So we're excited about having the parent community hear from the publishers. Revenue and expenditures. So looking at how we are going to purchase the adoption, the K-8 adoption, we're looking at the revenue sources as mandated cost, the one-time money that we have right now of $685,000. We're looking at using our parcel tax and our restricted lottery. The cost considerations for each program include four different components. The professional development, as I touched on before, is key. We have scheduled our four days with both publishers. Additional professional development, if we need it, that's a very important thing, very important. We do not want to just hand over the textbooks to the teachers and just have them in isolation. It's very important that they have that professional development. We're also looking at the textbooks, supplemental resources, and then the consumables. So once again, that consistency, we are working with the publishers right now to get the exact cost of the considerations for the adoptions, and of course, the publishers have been very helpful in giving us information, but we are working on those detailed costs. So once again, we're very excited. The consistency of the program for the K-5 will give us the adoption, and then all of our K-6 teachers will be trained in CGI, or Cognitive Guide of Instruction. So really, they're looking at two elements. You've got the textbook adoption, and you've got the strategies from CGI. So we're very excited, and the teachers are excited about this process. So I'll look to open it up for questions.
I'll just give you one piece of feedback I get from parents, particularly at the elementary level, is just, and there's no really way to get around it because it has to be piloted somewhere, and I understand that, but I think parents and students too get a little bit frustrated, "Well, Mrs. X's class is doing this, and we're doing this, and then now we're being tested," and it just sort of raises the anxiety level. At the middle school level too, I'm not really sure how you can get around it, other than just understanding that it's there, because there's no do-overs for these kids. This is their year to be in, sixth grade or fifth grade, and so, you know, it hasn't been the same all year, and it's not going to be the same the rest of the year, and some kids are going to have two years of being in classes where things are going to be piloted. So it's just something to be aware of and to think about because it's, again, I'm not sure how you get around it, but it definitely is there, and I don't know if the teachers feel the frustration, but the kids, you know, the kids and the parents do, because when you're piloting the materials, you know, you're used to being able to check your homework with the answers in the back of the book. Well, there's no answers in the back of an orange worksheet, so you, you know, so you don't have that feedback. So it's all that kind of thing that I think raises the anxiety level despite your process, which is fine.
Thank you. Feedback.
Can I say something to that? Is that okay? I would just say that, you know, one of the things, there has been a lot of dialogue with the teachers as far as looking at the standards and making sure that they are aligning and making sure that the content is covered. You know, they care about the kids. I'm in meetings with teachers every week, and it is challenging. It is challenging. And at the end of this process, we will have the same textbook in every classroom in K-5 and every classroom for PVC M6 through 8, and I think it's going to be really successful. I feel good about it, but I do understand.
We do understand. Any other questions?
I just have a comment. One of the issues we've had ongoing since my kids were little, and they're not little anymore, is the weight of the textbooks and the double sets of things, and one at the classroom and one at their house and all the, I assume that part of the strategy we're looking at is how we can use electronic resources, or whatever to extent that makes positive.
Yes, definitely.
All of the textbook publishers are, have an online component.
I would assume at this point, if they didn't, we wouldn't have been considering them. And just a historical question. You were looking at six different elementary programs to get started, six different publishers. Dumb question, did we always just have one textbook in elementary? Because I, over the years, I've heard stories about Everyday Math, and Alabama this, and Oklahoma that, and so on.
Well, I think.
Just curious, how consistent, how much, I guess what I'm trying to get is a perspective, are we making and doing this, is it also going to get, bump up our ability to be more consistent across the entire district?
I think you just did a wonderful summation of why it is important for our district to do a textbook adoption. As I visited classrooms and went into teacher, talking with teachers, it is very clear that we had that going on within the classrooms, and I think that's why it is important, like, why now for a textbook adoption? For that same reason.
Thanks. It's me, sorry. Something's happening to me. Okay, any other questions for the, all right. Dr. Austin? Thank you.
Again, I'd just like to thank the whole team for the preparation, the work that's gone into this. I think we're going to end up with a great product at the end, and teachers are energized. It came up at rep council, and it's as good as it's going to get. We're moving in the right direction. At this point, I'd like to turn over to Lydia to introduce our guest from School Services.
Thank you. Jana, if you could pass out the PowerPoint while I make some introductions, that would be great. This evening, we have joining us Maureen Evans and Sheila Vickers from School Services of California.
No, she's doing the School Services.
And they're going to give you an update of the operational review that they did just about a year ago, and provide the next steps and where we go from here, and just give you some detail on the processes that took place during their review.
Sorry, but I got to do this occasionally.
It's all yours.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Canno, and good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, staff, and community. I'm Sheila Vickers. My partner is Maureen Evans. We're vice presidents with School Services of California, and we really appreciate you inviting us here to present the work that we did on the organizational review of your district office. So we were asked by the district to focus specifically on the business services, the technology, and the human resources divisions of your district office. And the purpose of the review was to look at the organization structure, look at the processes, look at the staffing levels in those departments, and then come up with some recommendations to improve service levels and/or improve efficiencies. And to do that, we focused on all of these areas that you can see, if you can see, when you can see, within those departments. And so you'll see that we've got, again, the Human Resources Department, all the different pieces of Business Services up there, as well as Information Technology. And so we broke down our analysis and our report based upon those work areas in these departments. And the whole process involved looking at the organizational structures of these departments and work areas, looking at the essential functions that everybody was performing, and looking at the workload, looking at the staffing, looking at some of the issues that might arise when people are trying to accomplish their duties. So to do this work, we spoke with over 60 staff members in your district office in these departments, some people outside of these departments, and then also some people at your school sites who are basically customers of these departments, to get an idea of the functions that are being performed, what the capacity is of the organization here now to handle the workload peaks, what kinds of things are working well, and what kinds of barriers do people run into when they're trying to do their job? And we also took a look at the kinds of technology that are used or not being used to accomplish functions at the district office. And so these are the questions that we attempted to answer as part of this review. How can we change the organizational structure to better handle workload, to better provide services to other departments and your school sites and your public? Are there enough positions in those departments, and are they of the right type to carry out the workload that is needed? Are there duties that are being duplicated? Is there technology available that could be used to expedite things and to improve services? And are there services that should be provided that are not because of the limitations of the structure or the staffing levels? We also looked at, if we did propose some reorganization, could that improve services to school sites, to other departments, to your students and community? And are there systems in place to support the required service levels of your customers and our services being provided in a timely manner? So those are just some of the questions that we wanted to address as part of this report. So through all of the interviews that we had, and we want to express our appreciation to your staff, all of your staff members who participated, they were very helpful, they were very forthright, they came through with lots and lots of documents for us to look through. And as a result of all of our analysis, we came up with recommendations in all of those areas, and you can see how many in each area, a total of about 60 recommendations. Now, if you look at Human Resources, for example, that's a high number of recommendations compared to the other areas, and the reason for that is because there are so many things that are centered in Human Resources that affect the whole organization, such as, how do we make sure there are enough substitutes in our classrooms every day when we start school? How are performance evaluations done? Are they done for everyone? Are they done in a timely manner, and are they rigorous? So those are things that come from Human Resources, you know, Human Resources is the heart of that, but involve all of your departments, all of your managers, all of your school sites, to help make sure those work well. And so that's why there was a huge focus in Human Resources in terms of our recommendations, but they have an organizational-wide impact. And so as Ms. Canno said, we completed this study about a year ago. The district has already taken a number of next steps, and my partner, Ms. Evans, is going to talk about those.
Thank you. Good evening. So, once the work was done, we prepared a draft report, worked with the district, and then finalized the report, recognizing that you would not be able to implement all recommendations at once. Then we prioritized and put into five different categories all the recommendations. And so we provided an additional memo and report to the district with recommendations on the various priority order. And so, based on the timing from our review until the report was finalized, the district was already able to implement some of our recommendations, and so that was something that we recognized these items have already been prioritized, and so go ahead and continue to monitor to ensure that the processes and systems are continued to be implemented. The next area of priority, we identified recommendations that needed to be done as soon as possible. They needed to be given the highest priority, and it was related to, they were critical recommendations, and if they weren't implemented, they would have an impact on streamlining efficiencies and operations, or could put the district at a significant financial risk or position. Once staffing levels are in place, because we had recommendations tied to staffing that needed to be in place in order to implement, and so that was something that the district was able to identify resources and put some staffing in place, but there's significant areas where the district will still need to continue to look at improvements with the staffing levels in order to implement some of the recommendations. And then we also identified areas where if you were able to put either positions or equipment in place that you could streamline efficiencies to reduce the number of errors, lost paperwork, et cetera. And then, as time permits, that was our final priority area. They would be the lowest in the order in which to implement, but of course, we believe that they were very But of course, we believe that they were very important, as they were important enough to include as a recommendation. But it but it's something that the district would determine at at which point in time they had their resources or were able to implement. As I mentioned, there are some recommendations that will require significant staff time or additional staffing or budgetary resources to implement. What we recommend and what we see now as funding to the school district begins to improve, that the district continue to work on and look at the recommendations to see resources that they can carve out to to continue the process. What we find very impressive in our work with the district and the fact that a year ago we finalized the review, but something that the district has done with the superintendent and his cabinet is they've continued to routinely look at the the final review and to continue to look at those recommendations and identify what they can implement, where they are in the process of implementing those recommendations. And so the report is not sitting on a shelf. It's something that's a living, breathing document that continues to be reviewed. And the district keeps making progress in moving forward to streamline efficiencies and and looking at operational efficiencies. And so with that, we thank you very much for the opportunity to present. And we open it up for any questions you may have.
I have a question. Okay, so we got this booklet last March. And has there been any update as to where? And we had a not to exceed kind of contract with School Services. Where where are we along this whole process?
Maureen, do you want to talk a little bit about the the forms that you and Sheila helped us with the policies and procedures? And then we can talk about the report that we have.
Yes, so first was prioritizing the recommendations for you in terms of what we thought was most important that Maureen talked about. And one of the high priority recommendations was to get some critical procedures in place so that you could have a a structure and a process that everybody could follow and have consistent results. And so the district selected the highest priority areas to develop some procedures. And so we did develop step-by-step procedures for critical functions, such as making changes to personnel or adding new positions and making a purchase. Those kinds of things happen all the time here and are very important in terms of being efficient and making sure they're done correctly. And so we did prepare those. The district has reviewed them, and we've made some adjustments, so those have been finalized. And we also revised the Personnel Requisition Form to help streamline things and also to document certain things that you need in order to help have the the right information throughout the process.
And Malcolm, we just finalized those forms. So I'll be including those in an update when we're in the, when they're in the final form so that you could see them, and then we'll begin implementing them. And then I also have an an updated. I'm not sure if it's updated, but the recommendations that School Services prepared for us, we have a version with comments next to each of the recommendations. So I'll make sure that that gets in your update tonight or tomorrow.
Yeah, my question was just the same, which is what happened, especially because I'm new. What, where are we in this list? So if we had a thing, you mentioned, for example, just substitute teacher procedures or something. Okay, well, what, where are we in that? Because it's not, otherwise, we how, we don't really know. And if we didn't implement something you suggested, why, why not? Or we're going to do it next year, or we can't afford it, or whatever it is. So yeah, that would be helpful.
And so to that point, Ms. Conno has identified through those recommendations and the priority areas, provided updates or information on where the district is in the process. And I believe that's what she's referring to, to get the information to you as far as not yet. This is what we've done, fully implemented, and so that information will be available.
Yeah, and especially if there are things that aren't being implemented because of a cost. We're going to be having a discussion here pretty soon about budget and budget assumptions. If there's some things that have been identified by them that we need to consider.
There are some things that are cost-related, and there are other things that are time-related. I guess I could call them, John. For example, one thing that is a great thing to have at every desk is desktop procedures. That is one of the items under each of the departments that have not been implemented. And that's a time issue, it's not really a cost issue. So you'll see in the report that I send you tomorrow that all the comments that we made together with Trent and John on all the different recommendations that were presented.
I could just add, from what Larry said earlier about kind of doing things the right way, I just really appreciate the fact that now we have some beta-based, data-based decisions to make. There's times we knew where there might be, you know, duplicating going on or even triplicating, or the systems might be antiquated. But to actually have the data, and we've already been working on several of these areas over the past year already, but to have it was very helpful. And it allows us to have more informed decisions, so conversations.
So big picture on the critical items, what percentage are we addressing, do you say? Just throw it out there, ballpark idea, meaning is it 90%?
I think most of the critical items were at least 90%.
Okay, well, we'll get the details in our updates. And this is something obviously we like you to continue to track so that we have a sense of it, particularly when we start talking about budget.
What are what are the roles of these fine people going forward? Is your work done here?
We are always available to assist.
I think the the, once we finalize the procedures that we've been working on, that piece is finalized. So if we want any assistance in any other area, we can call them.
And you'll come back and talk to us about the cost implications.
Well, we we did, I I thought when we did this that we said, well, you know, we're, I I seem to remember it was like 40,000.
And it was, it was for the the written policies and procedures.
Okay, okay.
Anything else?
Quickly, along the same lines, if there's things we implemented that haven't worked as well as we wanted, we want to know that too, that that's okay. But we just want to kind of understand it going forward. Because I read the original report, and I'm seeing this, but I don't, it's, again, it's really hard to understand what hap, what happened. It's like I'm missing the end of the story.
You'll get a big missing piece tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
And I'd like to, I'd like to just add that we, we'd like to commend you on moving forward on those significant items right away. You you'll see that you've made a lot of progress already on the most critical items. And and it's, it's really gratifying for us to see that the report isn't sitting on a shelf, as Maureen said, that you're actually using it, and it's helping you move forward.
Thank you very much for your work and the presentation.
Thank you, Maureen and Sheila.
All right, we have one more item on your superintendent's report, and I've been looking forward to this one. No offense to School Services.
So have I. I'd like to invite our friends from Capital Advisors Group, Abe Hajala and Kevin Gordon, to to speak about a variety of topics tied to new possible legislation, just kind of the political landscape. So gentlemen.
Well, before we, Kevin, before we get started, though, I do have one public comment on your agenda item, student data privacy. So I think I'd like to take the comment first, so that you can incorporate, you can speak to, speak to the commenters. Sandy Valeri. Well, hopefully by you going first, he'll address the concerns you have.
Good evening. Maybe he can't answer some of this stuff. I appreciate the opportunity I've had recently to meet with Trent a couple of times regarding student data privacy. It's been some very good discussions going back and forth, some data gathering issues. And one of the things that has come to concern me more and more is the amount of information that is being collected by the state databases and with the longitudinal data system like CalPats, which I know the district has no control over, I know this is required data reporting. But they collect a lot of information, and then there's a lot of holes on what they can do with the data. I mean, you can drive a tractor through it. What do they do with the privates, the privacy rules on then what they can do with the data? Oh, we think somebody can develop some software with us to help us with instructional aids. We'll give them the data. And there's no, there's no reason why we, we don't have to check with anyone first. We waive the parent's right to know when we give that data away. Or somebody's going to develop a test for us, so we'll just give the students' data away without informing anybody about it. It's right there in the privacy data rules on the, you know, in the ed code. It's just huge. So they're just giving away our students' data left and right. I know that you can't stop it, unfortunately. The best we can maybe do as a district is come up with some mechanism to inform parents. Let parents know. And I think this is, they have, we have all these other issues we're out there trying to. Kids know when you go on and online that it's it's there for forever, that your records are there, your comments are there forever. Every time you go onto Facebook, it's there forever. Well, what's going into these data pools that are being collected on our kids are also there forever? And these other software companies are taking our data, our children's data, and doing god knows what with it. And it's going to be there forever. And parents need to know about this so that they have the right and the opportunity to review the information that's in these data systems and to correct it if necessary. That's all we can do. You can't stop it. But you can give, make it clear and transparent for the parents and simple for them to get an opportunity to look at the data and correct it if need be. The same is also true for smarter balance testing, where once upon a time, the data that was collected in STAR testing went up with the, with an identifier that wasn't easily traced. It was here in our district that that number 65298 was student Joe Smith. Well, now they get all of our student private information. When it goes up, they know exactly, that's student, student Sally Jo, and she is six years old, and she is black, and her parents, you know, come from Indonesia. And I mean, they know everything about her. They know if she gets, they know everything about her. They know her address, they know her phone number, they know everything. They know her grades, they know everything. And they own the database, and they can do anything they want with it. Parents need to know this, they have a right to know. And it's our job, your job, to inform them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, yeah, we will.
Welcome back.
We will speak to that issue. We were, actually had sort of a sequence. There are a number of issues that this board and the district have maintained concerns with and want, you know, updates frequently on what's going on. Obviously, we're providing legislative updates to you guys, or to the district staff. I will mention that tomorrow is the bill introduction deadline. So we're going to be having a comprehensive report on everything that's been introduced. So you guys will see it by, we're going to break it out by different areas. We've met with the superintendent. He's asked us to try to break it down so that we have it by issue areas that cover the different members of the cabinet, so that instead of you guys getting one big blob of all these bills, you'll be able to manage, looking at those in the different areas that each of you manages, and then giving us a sense of, this is a concern for the district, we want to make sure you're monitoring that bill, or whatever might be the case. And then to the degree that there's more information that you need in a particular given area, we're obviously happy to provide that. We've been asked to talk about a couple of key issues. And one of them is the ongoing concern that the district has expressed on the issue of student privacy, coincidentally, with the comment that the audience member had made. Some months ago, we met, and we got feedback from the district that was an area that they wanted us to monitor and be activist in on your behalf. So we know that the district has that as a priority. The very first issue that we're going to talk about has to do with the minimum budget reserve requirement that was put into the governor's recommendations last year as part of the Budget Act and adopted by the legislature. Abe's going to talk a little bit about that. I'm going to talk a little bit about the STIRS issue and what its implications are, sort of the hidden implications of that, and what the cost issues are going to be going into the future. And then we'll talk a little bit about the data privacy issue. So we'll start first with talking a little bit about this minimum budget reserve issue. And then feel free to stop us, or if you guys have questions along the way on any one of these topics, we're happy to get into a little more of a dialogue.
Yeah, so so just so I don't have to only deliver bad news and talk about the things people aren't thrilled about. I did want to mention the Legislative Analyst Office just came out with a report. It looks like revenues statewide are in higher than expected, probably by about $2 billion. Of that $2 billion, because of the way Proposition 98 works, almost all of it will go to K-14. So starting with a little bit of good news, we expect at the May revision or at July, the state's going to be dealing with extra money, and hopefully that can be used to solve some of the problems we haven't really solved yet, you know, including Common Core funding, CTE, lots of different things.
I might mention that the governor has put an emphasis on a lot of that money, and we think it'll manifest itself the same way as one-time money. So to the extent that you saw the discussion earlier about some of the work that's being done, particularly in the math area, and the chart that outlined what the revenue sort of opportunities were, we expect that number to be bigger for this district as well. So it'll give you other opportunities. That chart had three different revenue pieces in it as possible sources of revenue. We just think that the line, as it related to, it was referred to as mandated costs. It's the section where the governor gives districts one-time discretionary money, you can use it for whatever you want. But he calls it mandated costs because he owes you money on that. So to the extent that he gives it to you for that, but says, use it for whatever you want, he gets to check the box that he paid you back some of that money. And he's just trying to spend $1 twice. But and and so we can expect, there's a motivation, because the governor's got quite a pile of debt on mandate reimbursement, that he's going to want to try to probably put more money into that again at the May revision, and as Abe said, perhaps at the Budget Act.
And it's it's helpful because it's fully discretionary money. So it's one time, but it's fully discretionary. Okay, so to get to the local reserve cap, so the politics of this, and I I'm going to do a short version, and then, you know, stop me if you have questions. The politics of it are when the governor came up with Proposition 2, which is the state's rainy day fund, right, the initiative that was before the voters in November, CTA went to the governor and said, we're not sure we're crazy about that. Don't love the idea. Maybe if you could give us something, we'll go for it. And what they asked for was, from their perspective at least, there were too many districts with large reserves. And I'm just being fully candid here, they wanted to see the money on the table. So they said, if you give us this in the Budget Act, we'll support Prop 2. And that's the political backdrop of what happened. So in the Budget Act, they put this local reserve provision in. A couple of points are important. One, it only kicks in if money goes into the Proposition 98 Reserve. So you might recall on the rainy day fund, it has a whole different, a bunch of different components to it. One is a general fund budget reserve, right? Another is a mechanism to pay state debt. And finally, there is a Prop 98 Reserve. That Prop 98 Reserve is only triggered under certain circumstances that aren't going to occur very often, right? So I just wanted to point out that there won't always be a cap on local reserves. Three things have to, well, two main things have to be in place. One is the state has to fully pay off maintenance factor, right? That's the money the state owes us under Prop 98 for prior years. So we haven't always been fully funded, certainly in a recession, you're not. So until they pay off that debt, there will be no shift of money into the Prop 98 Reserve. If there's no money in the Prop 98 Reserve, there's no, no local reserve cap. So that's one important point. The second is Proposition 98 has three different tests. I won't bore you with the details, but unless you're in a Test One year, there's no shift into the Prop 98 Fund and therefore no local reserve cap. We've only had four Test Ones since 1988. They're fairly uncommon. This year, which is a very good budget year, it's a Test Two year. So there are Test One years, there will be some in the future, but they don't happen all that often. So I I say that to start because the local reserve cap is an issue that will come up at some point, but it's not upon us yet, right? And we don't think they're going to pay off maintenance factor for at least a couple of years yet. Okay, so how does it work? There's two provisions. One is a transparency provision, that's probably, doesn't have anyone bothered a whole lot. That kicks in this year. And what it says is, if you have a reserve that's higher than the state minimum, which almost everybody does, because the state minimum is a minimum, you're required to have at least that much. If you have a dollar more, which almost everybody does, you simply have to explain what your reserve is. So in your normal board hearings, your public hearings over the budget, everybody has at least two, right? One where you introduce the budget and one where you adopt it. Many people have more than two. You have to mention what your reserves are and explain why you're doing them. And that provision doesn't have anyone very concerned. So that's one provision. The cap, if there is that shift into the Prop 98 Reserve, which I mentioned is a sort of a of a possibility that hasn't happened yet, it'll be a few years down the road, then the rule is, for most districts, you can have a reserve of no more than twice the state minimum. There are some exceptions. One of them is that you can go to a county superintendent, two out of any three consecutive years. So my view is, we're never going to have three consecutive Test 1 years. So, I would say, at any year in which the local reserve applies, you could go to your county superintendent and say, "We need an exemption." And you have to make a certain showing why you need a larger reserve. And if the county superintendent gives you that exemption, then you can have a larger reserve. So, that's the basic provision. It's a, almost everybody thinks it's a terrible idea, right? Okay, so the governor came up with this local control idea, and the governor is extremely fiscally prudent, right? He's worried about debt at the state level, and he's worried about paying off various obligations, doesn't want to spend more money than he has, so he always does one-time funding. And then he comes up with this idea, "And I'll put a cap on local district reserves, so they can't do the same sort of planning." Almost everybody thinks it's a horrible idea. And so, what the governor said is, "I've heard you loud and clear, the statewide's and lots of other folks have complained about this." And in his January budget proposal, he said he's going to sit down with various stakeholders and reconsider this. Here's my caution. The way they've done it now, it's not a cap that has a whole lot of teeth in it. And, so if we can repeal it, we absolutely should, because it's horrible policy. You all should be the ones that decide what your reserve is. And you might have to negotiate with your local bargaining units and different folks about it, but you're supposed to make that decision, not the state. So, if we can repeal it, that would be terrific. The one thing I don't think we want to do is rewrite it and write it differently, especially with CTA in the room, because as written right now, it's probably not going to impact you a whole lot. And if it's rewritten, they might actually do a better job with it and make it worse for you. So, that's the politics, that's what's going on. We think the governor is going to find a way to compromise on this, because he got a lot of bad press over it. I think he even knows it's a bad idea. So we're looking forward to a solution. Kevin asked some ideas, what they might be. We think there are a lot of ways for the governor to slightly modify this in such a way that it won't be a problem for you, and it really will become just a transparency issue. There'll be an obligation for you to explain your level of reserves and do it at a public session, and we probably ought to leave it at that.
Great, perfect. I will add that today, CSBA, it was reported that CSBA has taken on an army of advocates, private sector lobbying firms up in Sacramento, that don't necessarily do education lobbying, but do a lot of business lobbying. So, in addition to their own focus on education policy, bringing in a whole cadre of other advocates strictly to lobby on this particular issue. I know that the governor, when he wrote the language that went into the budget, said, "I'm committing to us and paneling everybody together to talk about this." He's actually said to me that he's totally open to even repealing the thing if he needed to. So that dialogue's going to happen. And the place where this stuff is ultimately done, after a Budget Act comes out that people don't like so much, is in the May revision. So that's where I expect, if there's going to be some solution, it'll be done there. But CSBA and ACTS are exerting a great deal of emphasis on this issue. We expect there to be a resolution, so. The other major issue that's out there that isn't so easy is the STIRS issue. And the unanticipated increase in STIRS for the current year that we're in the middle of, and the governor did provide some mandate money that we also needed for Common Core, and then he also threw in, and if you need it, to blunt some of the impact of the STIRS implementation that was a year earlier than we expected. You know, there's money there, it's one-time money, so it doesn't do a lot. But what we do know is, over the next several years, the ramp up in the responsibility of this district to contribute a greater amount towards STIRS is going to be very significant. And undermine, in a pretty big way, the amount of money that we've been told by the state that we're going to be getting to get to fully funded under the local control funding formula. And the rub is, is that community thinks there's big investments coming to your district from the state for LCFF. We already know that you don't get as much money as a number of other districts. And we do know, and the community's not so aware of this, that the state isn't so flush that it can make us whole right away, so they're doing it over eight years. An eight-year payment plan to get us to a target that will be '07-'08 funding adjusted for inflation. I mean, that's at the minimum, is what they're requiring. So, in the context of that, and then to have the STIRS piece added on to that, but an exercise on LCAPS, which is the accountability mechanism for what you're doing with LCFF money, that has nowhere in it a recognition of the additional burden on STIRS. So what you do is, you're expected to have these community meetings where you're getting input for how you're going to spend LCFF money. Let's get everybody's great ideas. You get the community input for the plan of how you're going to use the money, but no sort of recognition, "By the way, folks, we have to warn everybody that there's this drawdown on STIRS now the state's requiring, after we did the LCAPS, that now we got to take into consideration." It's a problem. So, you're going to be making up for that when you go back to do your revisions of your LCAPS. You're going to have to be telling the community about this. We've had conversations with the administration, and one of the things that is out there, it's being aggressively lobbied by lots of people, is, "Give us some money on top of LCFF that mitigates the impact of the STIRS piece." Well, logically, the administration is thinking, "Well, hold on a second. We've had a STIRS component of an obligation you've had for a long time, and an even bigger PERS obligation that you have, and we're not going to go back and fund that separately. So why would we do just one piece of it and compensate school funding that much more? What we'd like you to do is actually just explain it in your communities that it exists." And that's, I understand that argument. But one of the things that we've suggested is that when you have the accountability that we have to our communities on what you're doing with LCFF money, we would like the formula and proportionality. What are you doing for the kids who generate the extra money? There's a seven-step process. We'd like there to be an eighth step that does a minus sign for the amount of money they're now requiring us to do for STIRS, so that the public knows that the money you have left over is what you have to do something about bootstrapping student achievement. That when we look at the sort of the poster paper around the room, parents aren't writing on it STIRS. We've got to do increased STIRS by a whole lot. Now, we know that there's an argument about teacher retention and compensation and those kinds of issues, and we want a good retirement system. And of course, we want one that's solvent, that's always nice. But it's not one of those things that people are clamoring to, where they think about intuitively when we talk about increasing student achievement. So we just want the system to recognize that there's this drawdown. And to the extent, clearly, that there's some financial offsets that we could secure, that would be great. Another point, and we've had some very recent conversations with the governor's office on this, and they made a really good point that we all have to kind of keep in mind. The governor put into last year's budget double the amount of money, and we're talking about not the one, not the budget we're in the middle of right now, but the one before that, put in double what was, what he had scheduled to put toward LCFF implementation. And LCFF is really the totality of the money that we get. You know, state money that we get. This year, in the budget proposal, again, $4 billion of investment for LCFF. And that's discretionary, fully discretionary money going forward. One of the things that they said is, if you look at other governors, the behavior of other governors, it is to take whatever that year-over-year increase is, especially when you're talking about a wonderful year, when there are billions of dollars you're going to give, and you slice it into several piles, and you name it after things that you're hearing from the school community that they want you to fund. And then you do press conferences everywhere about how you responded to those needs. And one of the things they said, to be fair, is that the governor absolutely could have put $3 billion in, and a billion for STIRS, and had everybody sort of placated on the issue, and you get to the same dollar amount. Instead, he's so focused on wanting to make sure that all the dollars you have are discretionary, and it's your decision how you do it, and yes, there are these bigger responsibilities, because we have to have a STIRS system that's solvent, that he doesn't like the fact that he's attacked every time when there's something missing in the budget we still want, when he's forking over that kind of money year-over-year. So I kind of get that. I understand what they're talking about. The one thing that we responded, though, is we said, "Do understand that the STIRS obligation masks the degree to which we have real local control with all the money we have, and what's going on in terms of our dialogue with our friends in labor," is they see $4 billion laying on the table, and it's time to talk. And not understanding the things that we have to actually take and separate from what's really available for compensation increases, all forms of compensation increases. And that's actually part of the dynamic.
Well, I think it's worth noting that the STIRS issue is a problem that's largely masked if you assume year-over-year growth every year, like the governor's assuming for the next eight years, right? If we get billions of dollars more each year for the next eight years, the STIRS problem will be masked. Here's, to me, the problem, is California doesn't work that way normally. We cycle, right? We have ups and we have downs. When we have a down, there's no mechanism for the STIRS rate increases to be moderated, right? So, in a bad year is when this is going to hurt. If there's a bad year, your STIRS rate for the employers is still increasing on that sort of schedule based on money being really good for eight years. So, I completely agree with Kevin. As things are going right now, the governor can say, "Look, I gave you all this flexible money, I get that you have to pay for STIRS, but it's okay, because you have $4, $5, $6 billion." Three years from now, if we're flat or even a billion dollars down, that STIRS increase will really impact you.
But the fundamental problem is that the pension system is broken. The reason that we're even having this discussion is because for years, they masked what the true cost of the pension program was by artificially assuming rates of return they had no chance of ever achieving. Hit it as a just giant liability for years, sunshining it to the extent now, they're sunshining it because it's politically expedient to do it while there's other monies to mask the problem, you know?
So, to the governor's credit, he tries to solve it. One of the dirty little secrets about his plan, as expensive as it is, because you've made this point, you should look at the assumed rates of return.
It's still too high.
It's still too high. And so, I mean, and to do it to something that's more realistic would just choke up, you know, all of the revenue we're getting. But, to Abe's point, it's a really good one. He's talked about the trajectory of the line that says this ongoing, never-stopping, never recognizing a downturn in the economy, demand on our increased obligation on STIRS, but then what I call the money supply line. That's the outward, or the out-year trajectory of the estimates of what we're going to get on LCFF, is this straight line that's up, that's not going to be continuously up. We're going to hit a bump in the road.
But the good news is, we can always mask that if we choose, when we get one of those years. All of a sudden, we'll assume our rate of return is better, and we'll have a temporary reduction in our STIRS contribution for a year or two, to make it seem better.
I wish they would do that, but they actually don't have that. They have no way to revisit that issue right now. They're going to keep that obligation on us, but that the money supply is what either diminishes or even is cut.
Your point is, the legislature could do that, right? But they're usually not in the business of protecting your finances, they protect their own, right? So, you're right, they could revisit, but one of the things we've said to them is, "You should have put a mechanism in the statute to revisit this, you shouldn't just wait."
The other issue is the most fundamental of all, can we afford this? I mean, none of it's actually really being addressed. I mean, we're getting the fallout of the choices that are being made to sunshine the issue, to make a partial way of addressing the issue, but the fundamental problem is, unless the state has enough money to be able to fund the promises we're making to all state employees, not just STIRS, but...
That's a good point. By the way, just to get a percentage there, so they're calculating the STIRS problem to be about $74 billion, which, as you said, is probably low. The problem for the rest of the state in UC retirement is about $277 billion. So, you're right, there are much bigger problems.
So if we just shut down for like, three years, collect all the money, we get caught up. And then we can reopen government and start all over again.
So, that's it. I wanted to see if there's any other questions on STIRS before we go on. I mean, so...
I just have a quick comment for the, it's, everything you're sharing so far is actually much better news than what I had heard prior, either about the cap and/or STIRS. It's not great, but it's better than when I came into the night thinking, so that's hopeful. What makes me a little nervous is, it sounds like with this cycle we're talking about in terms of the way funds come and go in California, I wouldn't be shocked if, when we go into a Test 1 year is the same time at which we'll hit that three-year mark when we're going down, and we'll have kind of a perfect storm coming with both.
Yeah, that's probably unlikely, because Test 1 usually won't happen unless you're in a good fiscal year. It's a good concern, a question to have, but that probably wouldn't happen. I do think, though, we have some issues when we talk about cycling that really need to be sort of thought about soon, and that is, you know, we have these temporary revenues with Prop 30, they're going to shut off relatively soon. So the sales tax will start shutting off next year, two years after that, the higher income taxes will start shutting off. And this idea that we're going to continue to have this high rate of growth even without those revenues, I think is pretty questionable.
Yeah. No, not at all. So, so those are the two first issues, and then we wanted to get to the issue with regard to privacy. And I'll just say, without trying to steal too much from you, Abe, is that there's stuff going on in the state legislature, there's bills there, there is a much more, there is an increasingly heightened concern that mirrors the concern of the community member that addressed you earlier. And even more so in Congress. Congress is really cranked up on this issue, and I expect them to be weaving in a more aggressive view about the use of data, particularly by private sector enterprises that we contract with as local school agencies, in terms of what they do with it. Now, just like if you go into a doctor's office now, you notice, you can't not notice, all of the steps that are being taken to protect your privacy with regard to health information. And you know that there are major laws to do that, and we have one like it called FERPA. And so, there are ways in which people can get into pretty big trouble when they violate that, and I know Abe's going to talk a little bit about this. But there has been a major effort underway in Washington DC, led by a number of folks in the Congress, to create an industry voluntary standard. And it looks great. The problem is fundamentally, is voluntary. And so there are a lot of members of Congress who want there to be more teeth in it, and for there to be, for it to not just be voluntary, but for it to be required. And there are some problems with that from a public policy standpoint as well. So, that's still being wrestled with, there's a lot going on. As you guys may know, the reauthorization of the ESEA has been marked up this last week, and it's going to be going to the floor for votes. The Senate is going to be doing their work, because both houses are Republican, there's going to be a lot of like-minded attention to this issue that will end up probably in conference committee and a final bill that go to the president's desk. The only problem is, is there going to be a lot of other issues that are crucial to the president, where he has fundamental differences with Republicans, and probably result in a veto of that bill. I'm expecting. It'll be a minor miracle, a major miracle frankly, if they all get together on a bill that reauthorizes ESEA. I don't think it's going to happen. So that would then leave those issues still a little bit unaddressed. And again, it's about the advocacy that you guys are clearly interested in by what you've asked us to do, talking about it, as it was mentioned by the person that testified, there's a limited amount they know you can do, but what you can do is, you can be advocates. And, you know, and make sure the community is aware of what some of the issues are. I would say this, though, as far as, there is some mythology in kind of what's going on and what data, like for instance, some of these companies that collect data and they do a service for you, actually don't own it. When they contract with school districts to do a certain thing, and they run data and they have it, that data's owned by the district. And when they go outside and do something with that data, that's a violation of the contractual relationship they have with the LEA, as long as you guys have got language that has something as related to FERPA in it. And Abe's going to talk a little bit more about this.
So, I think I would start with, actually agreeing with the comment over here that, you know, we could have a philosophical debate about what the federal government should do, or what the state government should do, but I think what's under your control is what all you do. So, I was actually going to focus my comments there, and I can move to the federal and state stuff if we want to. As you know, FERPA protects personally identifiable information, right? So, the idea is, if there's personally identifiable information, there's rules about disclosure, and it can't be disclosed without the written consent of a parent, right? So that's the idea of the federal law. Where there's controversy is, is controversy over, did the federal law fully appreciate what happens with all these digital platforms and the nuances of all that? So that's one issue. And the other is, you know, what about marketing? It's not clear that FERPA completely sort of wrestles with that issue. So we've got bills in California that are looking at those things, and as Kevin said, the federal government's trying to do the same thing. What I wanted to comment on is what really the district, and I think actually your staff knows all these things already and is probably focused in the right direction. What a district can do is, is make sure the definition of personally identifiable information is rigorous, right? So you can insist in your contracts that it means certain things and not allow folks to be sort of fast and loose with it. And that is something that typically, most of the contracts and your vendors will have definitions in there. But again, if those definitions are not rigorous enough, the district can insist on certain definitions beyond that. And again, this is something your staff probably knows. It's up to you what personal information you make available, right? So you may want to restrict, even though it's true that that data is supposed to be protected under the same rules that apply to you by third parties when you release it to them. You may just choose, well, we're not going to release everything. We're going to do the student name, you know, first and last name and some sort of student identifier for the district. And that's, or the school, and that's all we're going to give them. So there are things under your control. You don't have to necessarily release emails, for example.
So. What about the things that don't seem to be under our control like SBACK or TEST? I mean, it makes sense when we have a vendor or a contract when we can have this kind of negotiate, well, you know, let's talk about this and we're really not comfortable giving this. But it's the state of California saying you need to provide this information.
Yeah, I mean, and that again is the problem of focusing on what you can and can't do. You're right. So the state has always collected certain, we've had standardized assessments for a while. And that data has gone up to the state and so it's been available to the state. Do they need to make sure they do a good job of protecting it? Absolutely. And so there are two bills on that. Buchanan didn't focus on it directly, but I think Steinberg's bill does. That doesn't kick in until January 2016. I'm happy to give you, I'll send you by mail because it makes more sense to do it that way, by email, a synopsis of that bill. So I think the state is working on trying to cover those things and protect it. And as Kevin says, the federal law is likely to try to address that area as well. That's something, I'm afraid, I don't have a simple answer for you of what you could do as a district on that issue. I think we've got to, other than send us out there as advocates to tell the state and the federal government, they ought to be solving this problem. But I agree with Kevin, this issue of data has not suddenly become less protected. I think there's a little bit of a misconception about that. What we have is challenges with new platforms that make it trickier. But I guess I'd say my personal opinion is student assessment data is a lot more protected than a lot of the things that kids are doing online and through social media. I'd worry more about those than this one.
Can I ask a related question that's kind of in between those two things? And that is, a lot of people too are concerned about software that teachers use in the classroom that they're requiring students to use that aren't part of SBACK or mandatory testing, but aren't things that kids use on their own. But we use, for example, Edmodo and there's a few other interface. What's the one that Miralas uses? It's not even Google Docs. It's like, it's a type of thing where teachers can post assignments and some post grades and some don't. And those where the students feel like they're required to use them, some of the students are not of age to be making those decisions on their own. How do, what about that kind of data?
So those are the ones where I really do think that, those are the ones where the, you should probably have a contractual relationship in each of those cases. Those are the ones where my view is, your staff is looking at those carefully and wanting to define what personally identifiable information is and have some assurances that they're not disclosing those to third parties without written consent. And then on your issue of not of age, I don't know if this is an industry standard, but generally speaking, unless kids are 13 or older, the rule is these various companies that do the software are not supposed to be marketing to those kids. And even if they're over 13, my understanding of it is that a district can have a contractual relationship that says no marketing whatsoever without a clear opt-in by the student or parent. And so again, that's another thing that's within the control of the district.
But some of these things are contracted. They're just, they're applications that teachers use, that there's not a, there's not a contract that Trent has control over and he can't monitor every single teacher. You know, it's just.
But that reminds me of just social media policy. One of the things that we ought to look to on this might be CSBA. As you guys all know, and this district may be participating in that, they have a great service that they do where they create sample board policies on issues that cut across all districts. Is that this sort of begs a policy, if they don't have one already, that they can create for you that's a standard in districts. Because you have, I mean, we've created rules about school nutrition and what teachers can and can't do in their classroom anymore, that they used to have a popcorn machine and they can't do that anymore. I mean, there's, there are a lot of things that you think you can't control, but if you have a district policy about it, people understand what it is through professional development, they'll get it. And that the use of any kind of third-party really cool thing, that's a great learning tool, but it's got to have a sign in and then the kid's going to start give data about. You guys have a policy on that presumably you can get folks to follow. And I think that's going to be important. But one of the things that.
I think, and it's a great question because that happened with my son. My son is not into social media a whole lot. He found out for a class, the teacher wanted everyone to have a Facebook page because that's where, so you're absolutely right. But Kevin's point I think is correct. The district and schools, but the district I think should be doing it, can have a policy on each one of those things. And it's up to you whether you allow teachers to access homework and assignments and all those things through Facebook.
The last thing I wanted to mention was that the audience member who did testify a little bit earlier made reference to a number of characteristics that, you know, others can find out or know and how crazy that is. And I remember when Abe and I first started talking about, we said, if you think this isn't stuff the NSA already has, think again. But more seriously is that just the US census that's taken, there are people that maybe you're not real crazy about knowing, all the ethnicity and the diversity of ethnicity in your household and your address and where you live and all those other things, there are records out there of that. And it's not about, I think what I get is that we don't want to exacerbate the existence of a bunch of data that's out there about our families and our kids through the education, through the school. And if we can control that, great. But don't be fooled into thinking that other arms of government don't have a whole lot of data on everything about what we do and where we live and that sort of thing. And that some of that also falls into private sector hands. So we can just do the best job we can do. And from my understanding, extensive conversations with the superintendent about this and members of your cabinet, you guys are pretty much on the ball on this one. And so we have a lot of confidence that you guys got this pretty well managed. So that's it. Those are the comments for tonight. And then, you know, we'll be back before you guys again as we start to get into more of the budget cycle on sort of budget and revenue issues that are going to be really important in the budget decisions you guys are going to be making later in the year. The other issues are, the state is getting moving on what's going to be the next iterations of LCAP and some of the development there. And then of course, as I mentioned, the bill introduction deadline is tomorrow. We're going to have a whole bunch of topics on new legislation that you're going to see in the coming weeks.
Could I, could I hit you a pop fly?
Sure.
The LAO came out about the issue about state bonds and the way we fund. And I'm looking at the article that he's recommending a single grant, just changing the whole system, Kevin? Could you kind of give us a?
We are definitely have a pretty serious disagreement with the governor on how he approaches the whole funding rubric for school facilities, both new construction and modernization. And at the core of it, the governor doesn't want there to be really a big state role at all in school construction. We know it absolutely cannot work. Our schools in, from affluent communities to the poorest communities will be falling down if we get rid of the structures that we have now. It's the structures for school finance, it just is not going to work. And the reason why we know this is because we know the history over the last few decades of the evolution of what's happened in school construction and modernization, what our needs are. And what, what we've explained to prior administrations, they get it. I've never, never worked with a governor that didn't actually believe that we ought to have school bonds, both Republicans and Democrats. And it's because it does put half of the onus on local communities to raise their share of the money. And it works. This isn't just a handout. And one of the things the Department of Finance was apparently very persuasive in convincing the governor is that school people never met a bond measure they didn't like, a state bond measure. And that we'd have these big multi-billion dollar state bond measures and they go on the ballot and they, the Department of Finance goes, this new governor, he comes back after being gone for 20 years. And they say, the school people are in favor of it because the state general fund pays the bond debt service, not Prop 98. Doesn't come out of Prop 98. So they think it's a blank, blank check. So what we tried to inform the administration is, yes, but there's the other half. We do 50% on new construction. We do 60% on modernization. That's our share. So don't think that we don't have our own sense of limitation because we're not going to be asking for projects that we can't shoulder the half or the 60% on. So what the education community has done in the last few weeks, you may have heard about this, is an end run. We've always gone through the legislation, the governor placed a bond measure on the ballot. This time, we're going to go straight to the ballot using signatures and get a bond measure on the ballot that does what we've always done. And the, the resources have been put in place to qualify a ballot measure. So the signature gathering is going to start not too distant future. And we believe very confidently that we will gather all the signatures that we need to place that bond measure on the 2016 November ballot. There are some politics there that have people divided in the Capitol because there are people who are concerned about extending Prop 30 or some kind of revenue piece and they don't want them to collide. I believe, unlike some in the Capitol, that voters can chew and walk, you know, walk and chew gum at the same time. And that if we have a ballot measure, one that talks about our need to sustain investments in education and not have schools tank again, that we have one ballot measure that says, let's build those schools and another one that says, let's fund our schools. And I think voters will put that together. They passed Prop 1 and 2 last year and they were completely unrelated, all on a campaign that the governor did that linked the two somehow. People thought they were linked and they passed both of them.
They were linked. One was a water bond and one was a rainy day fund.
Yeah, they both involved water. Exactly, exactly. So, so the bottom line is, is that there's a politic we can get behind this. The governor has not been supportive of it. A reporter asked the governor about his opposition to that kind of an effort. And he said, I want to remind you, I am not opposed. I'm not likely to support. There's a big difference. And when he said that, he was a little mushy in his terminology. So I think there's some opportunity that once you get the signatures and you're ready to drop that bond measure in, there may be a new conversation that can take place.
Just to more directly respond to the LAO, this is one of those where, you might be aware of this. The LAO comes up with a lot of reports and some of them have some legs and some don't. My opinion is this one has no legs at all. It has several problems. One is this idea of just having a per pupil grant and then saying it's flexible, it's no different than operational money, right? That's a fundamental problem. The other one though is, is if they choose to pay that out of Prop 98, the whole education community will go crazy, right? Because what you're doing is undermining operational money. If you do it outside of 98, the other side will go crazy. So it probably doesn't have any legs, is the good news.
So you're calling these pop flies, is that what you? Pop flies?
I like that.
So I am curious about anything you can tell me about NCLB reauthorization and kind of this core waiver. I do a lot of work in LAUSD kind of during the day and then I'm in Palos Verdes Peninsula Unified School District night. This really doesn't sit well with me. And if it wasn't for the suspension of the student assessment data at the state level this year, we would have been in a world of hurt in terms of program improvement. It just seems illogical that you could have schools with, you know, 900 APIs going into program improvement and yet the four largest school districts that have not been improving, or maybe not improving at the same rates, get a pass. What's going on with this and where's it going to go?
So a couple of things. One is, the president was trying to figure out a proxy for the lack of reauthorization of NCLB. And that everybody was saying, look at, it's clear that the misfire here is that almost all school districts end up becoming labeled ugly. And, and that the one major thing that was different than the way we saw education reform in California, that it did not recognize at the federal level, was progress over time. And that we got that right with API, they got it wrong with AYP. So it needs to, there's an imperative for them to redo it. And in the, the lack of any kind of action and the complete paralysis in DC led the president to say, what's my end around on this? Well, I'm going to grant waivers. And his overreach was by having a standard that was very high on what it would take. Because if he had actually had a threshold that was a little more reasonable in public policy that made sense and you had overwhelmingly all districts sign up for the waiver across the country, then he would have gotten a de facto reauthorization of NCLB, doesn't need Congress. He didn't get that. And then now the agreements that he made all across the country are actually not being met. So that's a problem. And now Congress is in the middle of saying, let's do a reauthorization. I think the likelihood that Republicans get a bill on the president's desk is highly likely. And then I think, but there's, I think, a very likely possibility that it's a bill the president vetoes and we're right back to where we started, is that once we start up on the accountability, you know, mechanism again, we're going to all crash into this thing. And one of the things that I've said is that, is a very legitimate response by school districts is, if someone says, oh, the federal government says that we're not making it and we've got an API score of X, I say, you know about the feds, consider the source. And we make them irrelevant by making, by putting greater relevance into what we're doing in the state of California and saying, now, that's easier said than the community getting pretty cranked up about the fact that why on that index are we not doing well? And we want to demand some change. The credit, the utter lack of credibility that the states, the federal accountability system will have, I think will help us. But at some point, they need to get together. And I just don't know when and how that happens.
But for us, it had real implications in the fact that the school that was considered going into program improvement, right? Or Safe Harbor, all of a sudden, students were allowed to petition to go from that school to another school because in other parts of the country and in the state, the perception would be that that school was failing.
Right. And you got to put out information, you're required by law to put out information. Hey, the schools are making it, here's your options, tutoring and all these other kinds of things. So yeah.
So when we get the new assessment system, if the SBACK is going to count, is there, are we still in this kind of strange purgatory where we don't know what's happening? Or does the minute we start getting some new assessment structures in place, all of a sudden, we're going to have to deal with the same?
We are.
Well, that's a problem.
And there's no easy answers to it. It's really a complicated issue if we don't get any relief out of the federal government. I mean, the other thing that can happen is that the president decides to take a new course. He's got to revamp what he's doing. The, he got hit very hard by granting the core waiver in California.
So why can't we apply, why can't we get some of the highest performing districts along the coast to apply for a waiver that, listen, if we've made average yearly progress over so many years and we're at the point where essentially we've capped out almost, we should be getting the waiver.
The question will be whether in a, in a environment that is super, super different than the environment that existed when the president first put his waiver together, where he had political traction, he had some agreement over what he was doing. And now there's a repudiation of almost everything back in Congress right now. They want to roll back, they don't want to have the kind of assessments. I mean, they want to change everything. And in that environment, does the president find a new middle? And if he comes back with a new solution, if Congress fails along with the president to do reauthorization of ESEA, do they come out with a new type of waiver as an end around? Now, Congress won't like it, but the president strategically would be advised to create a process that more school districts, that answers the problem for more school districts, but yet doesn't hold them to this test that is not being embraced across the country.
I guess I'm looking for a stopgap measure in terms of, in the meantime.
I think you actually do have, because from a pragmatic standpoint, and I think you alluded to this, it's a brand new assessment. You don't make decisions like who's a failing school and who isn't without a certain number of years of data. I think the stopgap from a pragmatic standpoint is it's going to take a few years before anyone gets labeled as failing under the new system.
So is there a way we can get ahead of that train? Because I can see them, I mean, nobody's worried about what's going on in Palos Verdes in terms of, they were never foreseeing AYP and 900 API school going into program improvement. That was not, I don't think anybody was thinking about that. But I am worried about are potentially being handed the same policies that were in place?
I mean, one of the things I would consider doing if I was sitting where you are, I would seriously consider now, when you're this far ahead of that problem, writing editorials or having correspondence or communication with your community about how just, just how failed the federal policy is relative to them getting together on a reauthorization that recognizes real growth over time and the stellar job that's being done here. And they've got an index that doesn't work, that's broken. And that now both Republicans and Democrats agree on one thing, NCLB doesn't work. And to the extent that you can create a greater consciousness about that dynamic. And to the extent that you can create a greater consciousness about that dynamic, that when, at some point, you know, writing, writing something that says, the absurdity is that if this continues down the road we're headed, and California ramps up to what we think we're going to be doing, that we're still going to have to write a letter to you, the parent, saying that this school isn't as good as this school, and the fact of the matter is there really isn't that distinction, and they may actually just be flat wrong. And that the more a parent understands that dynamics going on, and the key thing is, don't write a two-page letter. You're writing a half-page or a one-page letter, something that someone would actually read. But I think you have to consciously think about, how do you bring your community along in keeping them aware of that dynamic so that when you get there, they say, aha, this is what they said was going to happen, which is because Congress and the president can't get their act together, we're going to be held to, to taking actions that are related to something that's just not factually right. And, and that's what I would think about. And obviously, that has a, you know, a, a longer sort of strategy setting component to it that you'd have to think about. But I, I would start to educate, a campaign to educate the community about how just wrong-headed that whole process is and how it doesn't fit with a state that's now moving in the direction we're moving, especially with the new assessments, to have a rigorous, you know, better education measure.
Is there anything we as a district can do alone or collectively with other similar districts in California to avoid this situation moving forward? Not necessarily to our community members, but to the state or the federal government? Like a waiver or something?
I always say this, is that when people just sort of give up and say, well, we're just us, and it's the federal government, and they're going to do what they're going to do, that's not in the spirit of sort of our democracy. You guys are coming up to Sacramento in a few weeks, and you're coming with community members, and we can articulate these types of issues. But the same can be said of Washington DC, is that having meetings back there and not necessarily just with our congressional delegation, but with committee staff that are writing this stuff, both the minority and the majority committee staff, to say, we're telling you. I mean, the more people across the country who articulate that and take the time to advocate that, the more they're going to get the message. So I don't believe in abdicating that role to somebody else. I think to the degree to which you feel strongly about it, you ought to be engaged. Now, I will say CSBA and AXA and their national affiliates are engaged in this. I think you ought to be plugged into that. But I think you ought not discount the possibility of doing something yourselves, too, if there's some opportunity for you guys. Either if you're participating in a CSBA or an NSBA event, that we try to work together on putting together some meetings separate back there for either like-minded coalition of districts or yourselves to at least be heard.
Thank you. Sorry to.
No, no.
Does this thing have a shelf life considering, I checked my watch, twenty sixteen is next year, and I believe it's a presidential election year? I mean, is this thing going to?
That's probably what ends up ultimately solving it, is that it's a new administration and a whole new rubric of where we go. That's what's going to solve it. It'll be post.
Ultimately, the federal policy is not sustainable, so it is going to get changed. That's why, I guess, I think, I, I think I would do a little bit of a wait and see because the old NCLB said every student will be proficient by X date, and everybody knew it wasn't sustain, it, it wasn't viable. This next, this next iteration, basically, if you run out the model far enough, eighty percent of our schools are in program improvement at some point, right? So that's not viable either. So I really do think they'll have to address it. You're probably right, not till the next president.
The California congressional coalition, I mean, we're, we've got our own, I think, assessment path. I mean, are they, are there, is the California coalition saying, oh, yeah, we got to get this thing reauthorized because we seem to be rolling our own pretty, well?
Yeah, well, the California delegation gets it, and every time we go in there, we go back there and there is a day of the week that they actually all have lunch together. And we've been, and it's members only. And we've gone in and talked to them, and there are members of Congress even from this area that you would recognize. And, and you go in there and what they say is you're preaching to the choir. We already know this, we're already on board because California was way ahead nationally by having an API that was predicated on progress over time, not an absolute sort of benchmark that was not realistic. But that, what we, that's why I say, you know, people go back to Washington DC with the NSBA and the different groups, and what do you do when you go back there? Everybody says, set up your meetings with your members of Congress. I think that's a waste of time because you're more influential when you're seeing them here instead of in Washington DC, I think, most of the time. But what you can do when you're back in DC is go to committee staff and the people that are actually helping to write and frame the issues and talk to them. Go over to the US Department of Education, say, you know that one waiver program you had? You better think of a new one. You know, whatever, is just get people understanding the crisis that they've helped create. I think Abe's right, though, and twenty sixteen is so close that, you know, you, you can probably wait them out and you're going to, you're going to get a solution sooner that way than anything. But I always try to encourage giving voice to the issues that you care about. Great. Thank you.
As always, very informative.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your report, Dr. Austin?
Yes, yes, it does.
Thank you.
Michael.
Okay, so I was looking through all the principals' updates when I make my report and just to see what's been going on. And it's like, I was going through all the emails and I'm like, wow, there has been so much going on at our school recently. Just an example is, I was sitting in church with my family last Sunday, and I realized that March fourteenth is the last day for me to take the SAT. So I had to sign up late, and I have two weeks until I'm taking the SAT, so.
And then you prayed.
We'll see. Yes, and then I prayed. So that's just kind of the feeling on campus. I feel like this time of the year, the spring is always the busiest. AP classes, where teachers are kind of gearing up, trying to cram in the last of the curriculum so we can review before the APs. And I always feel like every year, once you kind of hit the spring break mark, school kind of feels like it's winding down. So this is like crunch time for all the students, especially as a junior, it's always stressful for me. We've had winter formal, and it was at Unicasa in Culver City this year, and our theme was City of Lights. And it was a lot of fun. We had a completely different layout than usual with the DJ up like on a balcony, and we had an outside component to our formal. And I don't think it sold as well as it usually does, but I think we sold the amount we had to, to at least break even. I know a big problem that a lot of kids can't go is it's just so expensive. And so I've been talking to ASB, our ASB, about that. I just think it's, it's hard to get students to pay, not only for them, but their date as well, and it just becomes really expensive.
Can I ask you a question before you go on? Did they do the bus this year or not? Or the option of having the bus, did ASB work on that or not?
Charter bus up to, I think they always have that. I'm not sure about this.
Well, it hadn't been until a few years ago that it was even an option.
Oh, really?
Maybe about four years ago, they started having it as an option. And it never really seemed to have kept, caught on. I'm just curious if it's still option or not.
I know for me, kind of the whole fun part about formal is kind of the, you know, you get dressed up and you take the pictures, and then you go in your limousine or the, the bus with your friends, and that's, that's kind of.
Of course, that goes to your point of adding to the expense of it.
Yeah, but it's.
All right, thanks.
Our debate team has been doing really well, as usual. They competed up in Stanford, and what was really cool is a friend of mine who's on the PTA board with me, apparently she's actually an amazing debater, and she was staffing and judging. So she texts me and she, she told me she was judging my school in one of the finals. I don't know, there's different sections of debates, and I thought that was really, really cool. Our soccer team, our boys' soccer team, made it to CIF for the first time in nine years, which was really exciting. Unfortunately, they got a really bad seed, and they played a really good team. But it was still, it was two-one, Peninsula lost, but everyone was just excited to finally be back in CIF. On January twenty-sixth, we had cystic fibrosis day for associate principal Scott's son. And everyone was encouraged to wear purple, and we put up signs and just to raise awareness versus cystic fibrosis. And she came in and she was just so happy and so touched by what we did. And so I thought that was really cool. And she, she just kind of believed that so many people were supporting her. And there was just, it, it made her feel like people were caring about her back at her school, because I know she's been gone for a while. The last time I was here was Penn Open House, and we had a huge turnout this year. Usually it rains during open house, so that was good that it didn't rain. I remember the past two years, it's rained during open house and everyone's been shoved in the gym. So that was nice. We had a speaker, Tyler Durman, and he spoke three times at our school, once to the entire student population, once to the parents, and then once to just the leadership classes, which is service learning, ASB, PALS Plus, and Link Crew. And the, he's just a great speaker, super engaging, he's really funny, too. I know all the students loved him when we had him speaking to all the students. And then my mom went to hear him at the, the parent meeting, and she said he was great. And then when he met with the leadership students, it was a great opportunity for him to kind of dive deeper and have more one-on-one talking and answer some questions, which he wasn't really able to do in front of the whole group. So I, I know I learned a lot from that, and I think all the leadership groups did, too, and it was, it was great for all of us. For the first time this year, ASB put on Art Week, and we had a chalk contest, which we put out three by, three feet by three feet squares of duct taped on the, the black, the blacktop area. And students were able to draw their, with chalk, a design, make a design, and then they were judged. And it was really cool because it attracted a group that ASB doesn't typically target, kind of like the artists, more shy, reserved. And I know there was one kid that was not showing up to school. I don't, I don't know why, but he was always at his little square drawing, his, his drawing. And I don't think he was going to class, which is kind of a problem, but at least he was at school and he was drawing. And it was, it was just really cool to see all the students that maybe aren't super-spirited or love going to all the football, basketball games and just enjoy something that ASB puts on. Our Walk for Life was last Friday, and we raised forty thousand dollars, and it was, it was one of our biggest events we've had. This year, we partnered with Ridgecrest for the first time, and we, because in the past, we've been walking to High Ridge, and then the Ridgecrest students have been running, the PE students have been running to, to the fence and like watching us and not paying attention to what was going on at Ridgecrest. So we decided to partner with them this year. And what was really fun was we bought a thousand pounds of purple powder, and everyone was given a little bag, and then we all threw it. And I know the middle school kids loved it, they were having so much fun. We were helping to pass out the bags, and they were stealing like five and running around and throwing it everywhere. And it was, it was a lot of fun. And I think we'll continue to do that in the future, partner with, partner with Ridgecrest because it helps to raise a lot of money, and it's, it's going to City of Hope, which is a great cause. One thing that was great was our Principal's Advisory Council at Peninsula. I got to meet with the head of the food here in our district. And I think that was great because so many students were kind of confused at, why are things getting smaller? And then why are things getting more expensive? And it kind of helped to outline all the, the very, very strict guidelines that have been put down this recent year, these recent years. And we got to ask questions, and all our questions were answered. So I feel like that cleared up a lot of things and is encouraging people to buy food and knowing why these changes are taking place and just not going to their Kelly's Corner sandwich place and seeing that they've shrunk by like three inches and the price has gone up fifty cents and not knowing why.
I can give you an hour-long lecture.
So we had Spirit Week, too, and that was before our PV Penn game at PV. We had it at Peninsula. That's always the most fun sporting event of the year for me and I think a lot of the students. The problem is, it always sells out, which is kind of a bummer. Students are not able to get a ticket because it's a fire hazard if we sell too many tickets. I know it sold out before like seven-thirty in the morning. I got there at like six forty-five, and I was number one hundred seventy in line, so that was crazy. And then I know that when we went to PV, I was actually out of town. But I know that there was a group of kids that put up a tent, actually, to stay there so they could be the first ones to get their tickets. And I thought that was funny, I was, I was seeing pictures of that. And I think it actually sold out before zero period started to go to PV for the game. So right now, we have twenty Austrians at our school for the foreign exchange program, and that's always fun, having Austrians in your class, talking to them, seeing how they like America. And I know, I can just tell because a lot of them are in some, the same classes as me, and their English is already getting a lot better. And I don't know, it's really fun, I like that. And it's a great fundraiser for our school. And right now, a scholar quiz, which students at Peninsula love, when we get into little teams, and it's basically just quiz, and you compete against other teams. And it's a lot of fun. At lunch, you can go in and watch your friend's team. And then there's going to be a big finale or final competition in front of the school in about, I think, a week or so. So that's it, and I'm sure there'll be lots more by the time I come back next time. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. All right, so we're up to public comment on non-agenda items, and I have one speaker, Sandy Valeri.
I'm not even up here and you're already starting the paper. Hi. First of all, I wanted to commend the superintendent and Dr. Culverhouse about the progress you guys have been making regarding the assessment, math assessment, and also on the changes with the math pathways. I think you guys have really been listening to the parents, and I appreciate it, I really do. You guys have made a lot of changes. You've really heard what we've said, and you've taken them, and you've, and the fact that you've made so many optional paths for people to get into the advanced math, into the accelerated path, so that more people can take, more of the kids can take. Algebra in eighth grade is a really good thing, that you've heard us and you've adopted and made changes. I really appreciate that. I think that we, what we need to make sure that we continue to do is that there are, for the kids who are not good candidates for accelerated math, that they continue to have a path, whether that requires a bridge or not, that there's a, still a path for the non-accelerated kids so that they can still get there. And the main reason why I say that, not only is do they need the option to be able to take that higher math when they get into, to high school, but it also ties very much into the science pathways, which is what I wanted to talk about for a minute. If you don't take algebra in eighth grade and you wait and you take it in ninth grade, you're only going to be limited to being able to take three years of science instead of four years of science in high school because of the tie-in to the math prerequisites. That's the way they currently stand anyway, because of the geometry requirement. If you take geometry in tenth grade, then you can't take chemistry until later, and that's the problem. You won't be able to take chemistry until you're a junior, and then you won't be able to take physics. I mean, it's a problem. So I think that what I'd like to recommend here from the peanut gallery is that you go back and you take a look, and you actually, I think for a long time, it's just been, oh, yeah, you have to have algebra before you can take geometry. You have, sorry, you have to have algebra before you can take science. You have to have geometry before you can take chemistry. I don't know why you have to have geometry before you can take chemistry. When I was a kid, I know I'm a dinosaur, but when I was a kid, we took geometry and chemistry the same year. And unless you need now suddenly geometry to figure out what, how you compose a mole of gas or something, I don't know, we didn't do that when I was a kid, maybe you do now. I don't know. Why do you need geometry to take chemistry? But it's currently a prerequisite. I'd like to see somebody do something more rational, where they go in and they say, what are the actual calculations you need in this particular science? In, in, in chemistry, or in physics, or in, or in biology, or AP biology, whatever it is? What are the actual calculations you have to make? What are the actual formulas that you need to know? And then, given that we have now revised our math programs, where in the new math programs are those formulas actually taught now? Because it might have changed. And given that it's changed, can we have a new map that is rational and reasonable? That's all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So we have public comment on open agenda items, and a card was just given to me for Heather Kramer, but the item that you want to talk about, we've already talked about. We already talked about the math. So it's not, it was an agendized item, and we've spoken about it. So I'm sorry, I can't accommodate you. Okay, so we're up to item L, discussion action items, L1, Kate, twelve single plans.
That is my item, and we sent the plans. That is my item, and, um, we sent the plans, uh, to our board members, and as you know, the, uh, items are part of our board policy, our administrative regulation, our ed code, so that all schools have a single plan. This year we, um, met with the principals and we gave them a list of our action items on our LCAP and asked them to align their plans to the items on the LCAP, but the template for the single school plans will be changing next year. So this year was, um, was kind of the last year and it's, it's a good change because it, uh, this year to get them consistent requires a lot of manual work, um, to make sure that they are aligned. And so for the, for this upcoming year, we're excited to see that it'll be a, attached to the LCAP template. So you have a copy of all the, um, the plans, I just wanted to see if you have any questions regarding any of the items.
Um, where, where are these pla- I mean, what is the future of these plans as far as the LCAP is concerned? I mean, it, when we didn't have LCAP, this seemed like a purposeful activity. Now, I'm not saying it's not, it's just that we're putting so much emphasis into the LCAP. Do you know, you have a crystal ball on this?
I do not have a crystal ball, but I do know that it's the same as, like you need, you know, the board goals, strategic plan, LCAP, site plans, so it should be all aligned and, um, it needs to be realigned.
But it's a purposeful activity?
Yes.
Okay, and more importantly, required.
And required.
Purposeful activity.
Well, yeah, well, and when I first got on the board, we had, uh, you know, the site plans and there were seventeen different formats. Um, yeah, they, they, at least-
There was Alabama site plan and Oklahoma site.
Yeah, depending, depending on which way the wind was blowing at the school site, that, uh, so at least they are consistent and, um, okay.
Any other questions?
I just have a couple of questions, because this, again, this is all new for me. Uh, the, the first is that, uh, and I actually went and read all of these, um, plans pretty thoroughly, and I didn't understand why, or, or if it's okay that schools use different things to evaluate their progress. So some schools would use, um, like one of the high schools might use the exit exam scores, the other one doesn't, or some would, some schools I thought was a great idea to use the Lexile scores off those elementary reading things, but only one school chose to do that. Is that okay? Or is that not okay? Or is that a good idea, that every school is doing its own sort of way of thinking about their progress?
It's, it's typical.
Okay, it is, okay, and that's the part that I didn't understand.
It's typical.
It was interesting just to see how they, how they did it, because some of the ideas were quite clever and I hope that the principals share them with each other, um, going forward. Uh, and then one thing, the other question I had was that it, three of the schools said that they were using PTA and booster funds to pay for mandated sort of Common Core implementation type things. Is that okay, too? Or not okay? Or not a good idea? Or, because to me it seems like not a good idea, but maybe I don't know the background of it.
I would need some, some more specifics, Lyndon.
They were, I just wrote the schools down, it was Cornerstone and Miralast, and there were a couple of things that they were doing, I'd have to pull them up on here, um, that were, that were funded by PTA slash booster that said they were, um, Common Core mandated, uh, things. Sorry, I didn't pull up what the specific, the thing, excuse me, what the specific items were, I can ask you about it later. Um, but I was just curious if, again, that was a common, or here's one right here, RTI, and it lists District slash PTA slash Booster Club, and this is just Cornerstones, because it happened to be the first one that came up, I don't want to pick on them. Identify struggling readers and identify reading intervention programs, blah, blah, blah. Um, I was surprised that they would use PTA booster funds, or, or number two, implementation of Common Core standards, PTA slash Booster Club.
Yeah, I'd have to get back to that.
So it's not something I need to answer right now, I was just curious, again, because it's new for me, if that, if that type of thing was normal, or if that's just that different schools have different funding sources and they're doing, they're all doing the best they can.
Well, they're giving their budget and then they can make those choices, like every student is given a budget for the Common Core, then they can make the decision on where it's spent, but in, in relationship to the booster fund, I have to look into that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I would just add, it is fair to, for the, those questions are great questions, we're going to come back with some better answers on that. But what we don't know, just looking at a budget like this, sometimes RTI can mean PTA is helping out with prizes for kids who are doing good things.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So there could be levels where it's completely appropriate, but as a district, we are trying to take some of the responsibilities of core programs back to the district level, and I think that's what you're seeing even with our textbook adoption and taking that out of the hands of PTAs, but we'll, we'll get you specifics on that.
There was one on, there's, uh, on Mir- look on Miralast, too, that was the other one.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Okay, so we have a, suggested action plan.
I move that the board approve the K-12 single plans for student achievement for the 2014-15 school year as presented.
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Strategic Planning Board Workshop, L2.
Uh, yeah, this is my, my item. Um, it, it is clear as we, as we jump into this world of LCAP and as, as Malcolm had mentioned, the increasing importance of LCAP, that, uh, our district goals, our current district goals, sometimes called board goals interchangeably, um, need to sit on top of the LCAP and inform that work, and our current goals are not, uh, constructed in a way to where that happens naturally. Uh, it's also, um, an important piece of our, of our, our, one of our guiding documents, something not easily done here at the board table during the course of a, a regular meeting. So we would, we would recommend that we, uh, get parameters to schedule a special board meeting, and this particular instance is to approve a contract of a one-day facilitator to help us through the process, a person who's a established expert hired by AXA as the provider of LCAP training, uh, to come in and work with us.
Any questions?
Nope. And I move that the board approve the statement of work with Innovate Ed and the amount not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars unless otherwise agreed to by both parties.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. I'm going to ask Janet to coordinate, uh, calendars with you, um, all separately.
Okay, and if you don't mind, we'll take about a two-minute break before the budget comes. Tony needs to, and I need to stand up.
Certainly.
Always a favorite topic of mine, so I'm looking forward to this report.
Well, tonight's budget assumptions are actually just on the revenue side of the budget, and, um, they're based on the governor's January budget, so I'm going to, uh, turn this over to Kathy and she's just going to, um, briefly go through the revenue side. Um, we'll allow you to ask this question, give us directions for further assumptions to bring back at the next board meeting as we begin building our budget. So Kathy, do you want to go through these assumptions?
Most of these should look pretty familiar for anyone that's reviewed budgets, our budget assumptions in the past, there's not really, uh, any change in the format. Uh, we do start with going over the, um, LCFF entitlement that we estimate will receive next year. As you can see, it's about eighty-one point six million. Um, that's an increase of about a hundred and fifty-two dollars per ADA over what we had already projected at first interim, uh, because they have increased the gap percentage, um, at the, uh, governor's, um, proposed budget in January. Uh, many of these, um, projections are based on recommendations from school services, for instance, uh, interest income at two point five percent, lottery income about a hundred and sixty-two dollars per ADA, then it also lists our mandate block grant income. We have included the one-time discretionary Prop ninety-eight funding, currently it's estimated at about a hundred and eighty dollars per ADA. Included information about the parcel tax, uh, these numbers are based on the current estimated CPI, if the board approves that in April. Um, we have included the, um, PEF gifting to the district of approximately three point one million, there is a few hundred thousand that they also support, uh, programs directly to personnel or school sites. I've also included information about the CalPERS administrative, um, fee for retirees. Um, a number nine, you'll see there's a blank, um, for the indirect cost rate, we don't have the estimated fifteen, sixteen indirect cost rate yet, we anticipate that'll come out sometime in April. Uh, we are still charging the enterprise funds for facilities' use costs, as well as this will be the final year of the four-year repayment plan for the prior year, um, indirect costs, that we're going back to two thousand eight oh nine. Um, we also plan to transfer in, um, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to cover a portion of the site discretionary expense, this is the same as the current year. We have home-to-school transportation funding, which is part of the LCFF, of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, that's only about half or less than half of what we actually end up spending on transportation, and then we also expect we'll receive about two point one million for K-three CSR.
Anybody have any questions?
Just had one, and it was on the enrollment number. I don't, I mean, I know we've been closely monitoring enrollment for a long time, but I've been operating in my head under this eleven-eight number and this seems to be significantly less. Is it, I'm just off and I've been missing the attrition, or?
No, we, we've not been at eleven-eight for the last-
Well, no, but eleven-eight is the, is the physical count.
It's the enrollment, this is, um-
This is the, after taking the absentee percentage or whatever.
Yes, this is ADA, Tony.
Sure, so, that's significant. So I'm wondering if, um, we need to get back around that. Now, we, for years, we're, had a subcommittee and we were looking at it and we were talking about ways to kind of get as best a grip on it as we can and kind of what we knew was going to happen, it seems like we're starting to get there.
But just to emphasize, it's, this number is hardly different than the current year we're in.
Right, correct, right now, this, we've not projected a decrease.
Mm-hmm.
And that's something Kathy and I will look at, uh, more closely as we complete P-two.
It just highlights the fact that we have about, we lose about two hundred kids, your, kids' years' worth of funding because of absenteeism. Uh, we are still, have like eleven thousand eight hundred students or so, but after taking when they show up, it's only-
I got you.
Is that rate, I, I thought that rate was more-
It's around ninety-seven plus percent.
So this eleven?
Eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-eight, is that the number we're all talking about?
That's the ADA, eleven five seventy-eight.
Where are you looking at? Where, where do you, oh, I see it, never mind, enrollment, yeah.
Yeah.
So is enrollment ADA?
No, that's different. ADA is down further than eleven three twenty-eight.
Okay.
Three twenty-eight.
So actually, it's the opposite then of what I just said, I've done this several times in the past meetings.
That's what I just said, that's what I just said, too.
Yeah. So, actually, we have been holding better on enrollment than we thought over the last few years, meaning, five years ago, we really thought we were going to be losing hundreds of students every year, and it seems as though we've been able to kind of hold it steady.
Yeah, because what we've seen, what we've been seeing is we'll lose them in the lower grades, because our kinder numbers, TK numbers, um, are just lower. I mean, if you look at birth rates, people just aren't having as many kids, and so-
I'm done, Lydia.
You're done.
I did my, I have a new kindergartner coming.
Put me down.
Um, um, so that's one of the problems, but then we always see an increase in, in, uh, ninth grade, where we have families that are, are bringing their kids in here for high school. So we do lose, but then we gain, and so it's not been a real significant loss.
So this isn't actual kind of students in seats, it's, it's in terms of the actual numbers of people that were showing up to class?
The five twen- five seventy-eight is-
Registered.
Registered.
Correct.
And the three twenty-eight are the, uh, seats filled.
Okay.
On a daily basis.
The two hundred and fifty dollars, the twenty, two point five percent, or whatever we lose.
Thank you.
And we will revisit that before we complete the budget, uh, adoption process, because we'll be looking at P-two, which is, um, mid-April.
Yeah, this is based on a drop of about fifty over the current year.
Uh, what should be, I, I keep these enrollment reports, the most recent one I have is October seventeenth, maybe? No?
Should have, I know we've done P-one, which is through, um, month four.
You have the number four, please, not the number four, it says the number at the top.
Okay, yeah, I've, I've got, okay.
Six hundred and five. But it's, but that's just three years ago, probably.
Well, yeah, I mean, declining enrollment, as Tony pointed out, is something we've been, or enrollment enhancement, well, wasn't that one of our marching orders back in the days? Rev-enroll, I think we called it, revenue and enrollment, um, and we haven't been talking about that much at all.
Let's, I, I think we should also, because this is sort of the same stuff we see basically every time, it doesn't change very much, you're going to fill in one number, but the ones that matter is what we're going to plan on spending, which is next time. And so we've seen the, we, you know, have the current year's budget, which has assumptions we can, we've looked at. What things, would the board like to have, uh, examined as potential things we want to consider including on the expense side of the budget for next year, I mean, in assumptions? We have the usual stuff we'll see next time, like two point three percent for utilities and, and such and such, but, you know, what other kinds of issues that we've cut back over all these years, are we, would we want to consider looking at if we had the money? Anyone, anyone want to take a stab at any of those, to maybe have Lydia and Kathy start to work on that?
I thought I saw something in one of the updates around kind of the cost of credentialed versus non-credentialed teachers, how that might impact us if all of our teachers were actually credentialed, would be the fiscal impact of that, is that assumption?
All our K-12 teachers, are you looking at elementary?
Elementary.
Are you, are you speaking specifically about PE, music, those kind of items?
I thought I had seen in the update, it must have been in the PE, is that correct?
Yeah.
If, if the teachers were credentialed, what would be the impact? The elementary level, in terms of PE? PE.
Right.
So, so you mean if we had ten credentialed PE teachers, instead of five?
Correct. I didn't want to imply that our teachers weren't credentialed.
No. I would like to see something probably from Louie about optimal maintenance staffing, facilities, uh, maintenance.
Along this, along the same lines, I was here as an audience member a couple of times where teachers came and spoke specifically about custodians, positions that had been cut back during crisis times, and I think it was, I don't think it was high school, I think it was elementary and middle school, intermediate school, that there was a couple of teachers that spoke about that, um, at their sites, and they convinced me, so I, it would be interesting to see what their numbers were.
One of the bigger issues that can't necessarily be addressed, but I think we need to be cognizant of the fact, is that we're not spending enough money to maintain our facilities. Forget routine maintenance that we've cut back, cut back, I mean, we have to do a certain percentage or whatever, and we've cut back the tradespeople that we have available to do it and the, and the, um, maintenance people and the, uh, staff in the fields and wherever else, but, um, we are not spending enough, my perception is that we're not spending enough money to maintain our facilities, to keep them in the condition they're in with normal use. So, we have this beautiful facility here, we may have spent zero dollars since we've erected it and set it up, and normal maintenance would be some kinds of things, but we look at and say, well, it's relatively new and things aren't really broken, uh, we can slide by for another year. There's got to be some way of developing a sense of what kinds of things we should be maintaining as routine investments in our infrastructure, so that we're not going through a building cycle, then it all falls apart, then we have to rebuild it again, instead of getting the full value. I know we've had talks about this with roofing, we know that there's a lot of these kinds of expenses that are way beyond routine maintenance, that we have to identify some kind of funding source to pay for them. There may be bond measures somewhere, but I, I don't think we can develop a fiscally prudent approach to our long-term district maintenance needs by just saying we're going to float a bond next time. Yes, there's things we need to build, but we need to maintain the things we're doing, and my sense is that we're, you know, we're not necessarily doing that, so if you can come up with some basic sense of that, and maybe not in the next set of assumptions, maybe there's some way of looking at it, I would appreciate it.
Total cost of ownership.
Basically, yes. Basically, yes.
I was, Lydia, I was watching an LAUSD board meeting on cable, because that's what I do in my spare time, is I watch school board meetings on cable. It happened to be a special meeting, I think, about kind of the measles outbreak and what they're doing, but it, it reminded me, because they start talking about nurses and all the things that school nurses have to do that they never imagined they would ever be doing when they came out of nursing school. And I know we've been very strategic even throughout the entire budget crisis about doing everything we could to, to keep as many nurses as possible, but I'd be curious to know kind of where we're at with that, and is it where it needs to be?
So, nerfing, nursing staffing ratios?
Nurses staffing ratios, and I don't know if there might be other auxiliary personnel that are not slave to nurse, but that are also helping, yes, health clerks.
And that goes to an, almost like an A-skip kind of question in a sense, because the way we operate that program may be potentially exposing us to things where you're not considering, that maybe our insurance carrier would make some suggestions on. I mean, it's kind of like the playground equipment or some other thing that they see slip and falls. If we're operating our program in a particular way, we may be exposing ourselves to liability we're not even aware of, so that'd be a great thing to understand.
Okay.
Did we give you enough things that we can have by next Friday at two o'clock?
Any consideration on discretionary funding, additional discretionary funding?
You know, the thing is that if you, if you put the numbers in that give these to start with, we're going to look and say, okay, we'll, we'll ask you the questions the next time around if we had a one percent cost for all our employees, or we had site funds to go this, or whatever. We'll, I think, once you throw numbers in there, I'm sure we will have some additional questions like that, but, and frankly, that's kind of easy for you to do, because if we said we want to increase it by a hundred dollars per ADA or something, or ten dollars, we can almost calculate that one off the top of our head. But if you see something else like that, that you know we've given address, you may want to put a placeholder with no number there and say, this is something the board has talked about in the past, we haven't really done anything, or this is something we've done and you haven't really talked about this time, it'd be good to throw it on there just so we can.
Our discretionary funding this year was what, per ADA?
Nineteen.
For the sites?
Oh, nineteen.
Nineteen.
Not a lot of.
Per ADA, no.
Not a lot. A good conversation to have would be to try to aggregate what all the PTAs and boosters are still doing. I think, I think there, I think that fundraising machine is operating at a level that still assumes a recession. And if we can, you know, throttle back, I know one of the PTA meetings I went to where the site discretionary funding, and you helped me put that report together, was kind of news to our PTA leadership. The principal hadn't told them, almost to each site, that he or she had district discretionary funds. That didn't come to the table when they were saying what their needs were. So, anything to relieve the, that kind of fundraising pressure, if you want to call that, on the site.
You know, it's interesting, Malcolm, as I worked with Nancy and Beth, PTA State asked them to incorporate a fiduciary agreement, which was good in two ways. One, they used to reimburse the school sites after they spent their money, and with this fiduciary agreement in place, which requires the principal's signature, my signature, the PTA president's signature, they actually are able to send the money ahead of time so that the site would have the money in hand to make the expenditure, and it also then holds the sites accountable to make sure that the money that they received for that particular purpose on the fiduciary form was in fact spent on that item. But what's really interesting is that we're seeing all these fiduciary forms come in now after the new year, now that we've implemented the program, and they're all still coming in for instructional supplies. And so, I know that the PTAs were really happy to hear that the sites got more discretionary funds for those purposes, but they continue to support the schools.
Well, that's what I mean, they're still operating as though it's twenty, twenty-ten.
And that same list that you, I gave you, I did give a copy to Beth and Nancy when we were working on the fiduciary agreement, so they were making sure that every site, school site PTA president had all the same information, so.
The other bothersome one is the amount of money that goes into still supporting athletics at the high schools.
Yeah.
And I don't know where we're going to come out this year, we had a big issue last year, we won't really know until it's done. I haven't heard that any team has been canceled this year, but it'd be interesting to see our progress at our second interim as to how we're doing on our portion of the.
Well, actually, remember, we changed it up this year, so I've been working with the two high schools. We have a meeting the first Wednesday of every month. We've been working on their ASBs and how they use those dollars, and they have the district contribution towards athletics, and they told us how to set it up in the budget for them. So, some of it is used for stipends, some is used to purchase equipment, some is used for transportation, and they both understand that anything over and above that is coming out of their ASB.
No, I, I get that, but I'm also looking at the burden for the parents, which is, you know, different sports end up being very expensive, and it really isn't the goal. Obviously, we have, have to, want to haves, nice to haves, and need to haves, and I sometimes wonder whether we're actually asking parents to fund need to haves as opposed to nice to haves, transfer, go on the bus to go here, or go to this tournament, or do this preseason workout, or have nine coaches instead of three coaches and that kind of thing. And, you know, at some point, it'd be nice to be able to address some of that stuff one way or the other, either coming up, I know, we've talked about having, here's what the baseline program is, and I think we have that going this year, right? Evaluating at the end of this year and saying, this, this works, the baseline program is fundamentally supportable, and the schools can work with it, or it doesn't work for the baseline program, here's what's happened, here's what the ASB funds that weren't intending to be used, or whatever. It'd be interesting to find out what that is and see how that plays into our budget as well.
And where, where are we now as far as our contribution to each high school for athletics compared to two thousand seven? Because we throttled that way back, didn't we, Larry?
Yeah, we're, I, you know, Kathy, do you know what it wasn't? I wasn't here.
I don't know what it was way back then, because I know we're at five fifty for each school now.
It's five fifty each this year.
It was four fifty the year before, I don't, I want to say.
And that number we knew wasn't supportable. Now, maybe five fifty is, but I think it was more like seven fifty, eight hundred, a million dollars.
Yeah, it was, and.
It was a lot of money.
Which kind of gave birth to this whole voluntary.
Transportation.
Well, well, no, the whole, what do they call it at the sites? The contribution, voluntary.
Participation donation.
Write a check?
Write a check.
Yeah.
It's participation donations, and we'll see how the five fifty plays.
But that participation.
Participation donation.
Donation is something that came about after I was on the board, it was like two thousand eight, something, wasn't it?
It was about the time my son was in cross-country, so I want to say seven, maybe, two thousand seven.
That didn't used to exist, you didn't use that.
No, didn't exist.
There was a transportation.
Payment fee.
That existed for a while. That existed probably from my free, kids first started, so it was like two thousand three, I think it was in place, but that got rammed up considerably. Anyway, anyway.
But that's cer, that's certainly on the expense side, and we've had people come to the board saying, you know, maybe it's time to give.
Now, those monies do not come into the district this year at all either.
What was that?
Those monies do not come into the district anymore. They're going into the ASB. That was the shift this year.
Yeah, but the re, the, the reason that machine is still running is, again, it's like people buying supplies at the elementary schools, they, there still seems to be this mindset that it's two thousand nine all over again, and it's not. I mean, when they stand up here and saying, oh, there's, you know, the May revision is going to be happy days are here again, and you're going to get this one-time money, it just is counterintuitive that we still have this, oh, you got to pay a participation voluntary fee.
And I think, and you know, the, sorry, it's that the, you know, the high school athletes are paying a participation fee, but then their facilities are being used by, I guess, morally younger people that aren't paying a fee, they're not paying enough, and so that seems kind of a disconnect sometimes, too, I think people get frustrated by that, that you're paying, you know, on the, I don't know, whatever, the tennis team and then the tennis courts are being used by youth groups or whatever this sport is. And that's something, you know.
Are you saying that they're being displaced?
No, no, they're not being displaced, but they're, but, but the, the high school students are paying for.
The particip, patient fees are only for stipends, transportation, uniforms, not for the facility.
It's not for anything facility-related? Okay.
No, but it's, but you have, you're touching on the perception of it.
There's a.
Which, I mean, and the fundamental bottom line to it is, if you want to go to brass tacks, we have a lot of things that we ask the community for that if we didn't have to ask the community for, it'd be better, number one, because they might still be generous and do things with the Ed Foundation regardless, but two, if we continue to build our hopes and dreams on this continued stream of money every year, then we make decisions that permanently alter how much we're going to spend, i.e., when we make a decision to give an employee a raise, that never goes back. So, we make that assumption based on things, way things have been going, but what happens if next year, parents say, I don't want to give, pay for pencils and paper anymore? Well, they shouldn't have been paying for pencils and paper to begin with, and now we've already made the decision that we've given away the money that could potentially pay for pencils and paper, and we're in the same boat, oh, God, we need people to pay for pencils and paper again. So, it'd be nice to understand what kind of obligation we're talking about and how we try to address that.
The other, the other revenue streams that, that again, were put in place because of, you know, the recession, and we're not there.
Well, we're not back at two thousand seven spending levels either.
Right.
That's going to take another six years, but we've made a lot of other significant changes in our operations that have made us more efficient. We do have more kids in the classroom, we've made a lot of changes that maybe aren't as great, but their efficiency, they've improved our efficiency, so living within what we have now, it doesn't make sense to continue to do some of these things and continue to have our hand out all the time.
Kids, I mean, kids, I know at Peninsula, I saw the form for it, they're actually asked to pay a participation donation for math and for science, for their regular classes, and it's not, it's not, you know, the typical thing where the booster clubs are funding a special lab, or they're paying for the frogs, or whatever it is, but they're, and at PV, I think you're just asked for a lump sum at the beginning of the year, and it's not divided up specifically like that, but when it, that goes to kind of basic things that now that we're not in that time anymore, would be interesting to see how that would work out, because that, I was surprised by that.
Can we get a report on, we initiated this conversation about two and a half years ago where we got all of the folks together who were raising funds for a variety of reasons, all well-intentioned for our students, and it didn't quite go where I think it should have gone, but I think it would be nice to get kind of a, whether it's an asset map or a needs assessment of kind of who still is raising what funds and for what reason, and once again, we are trying to start putting more resources into the schools to eliminate some of that or to alleviate some of it, but yet I think Malcolm's exactly right, what's happening is people saying, oh, well, now we can go to that extra tournament, or we can get this, that, which we want to have, we want to have the must-haves, and we also want to have a world-class district, but somewhere in there, you know, we, if nothing's changing, that's, that's problematic, so.
And there's the equity that we were concerned about.
There's an equity issue which I think Linda has brought up tonight, that there might even be new issues emerging with Common Core and the ways PTA is funding or boosters are, there's just, you know, there's certain thing, we want to do the best we can as a district to provide the resources for that quality public education. We recognize there are still gaps, but to know where those gaps are and how they're being met, I think, is important, so I would encourage us to kind of re-initiate that dialogue.
Doesn't have to happen in the next budget assumptions, but it is something we need to work on.
Okay.
Anything else on this topic? Thank you for your report. Item N one.
N one, that sounds like it's my construction status report.
Same one-line item.
Same one.
All right, any questions?
Any questions?
Nope.
All right, perfect. Consent calendar. Linda, is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
I'll jet on this one.
Tony.
Nope.
Malcolm?
Nope.
Okay, I am going to pull one. I'm going to pull O three A, so I can ask a question. All right, so can someone move approval of O one, O two, and all sub-iterations of O two, and O four?
So, moved?
I have a second? Anybody? Thank you.
Sure.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. O three A, purchase order report. There was one line item in there for twelve thousand dollars that I sent Superintendent Austin a question about, that because I'm not on my computer, I can't pull up the report to tell you the exact name of the item, I'm kind of hoping you remember what the name is.
Something events.
I, I do remember, it's first-class events, and it's, I'm glad you brought that up. It is an item that was for the, in this particular case, Peninsula High School for their recruitment efforts, and this is stage and rental of a stage and, and equipment for one of their recruitment nights. Also, a topic that I would like to discuss further with the high schools and ultimately the board.
So, it was a, it was a staged rental, I assume it was a pass-through where we issued the purchase order report, or purchase order, but ASB or some.
We have six thousand dollars budgeted for each high school for their eighth-grade recruitment, and six thousand dollars of that twelve thousand dollar invoice was for Penn High's eighth-grade recruitment that we have budgeted for them. The other six thousand dollars was paid for out of, I think, her discretionary, I did look it up.
It's not that important.
Yeah.
So, my first comment would be, let's, would the board like to consider when we do our budget for next year, taking away the six thousand dollars that the board is, that the district is providing to do eighth-grade recruitment? Because fundamentally, I have an issue with how we do the whole eighth-grade recruitment between the high schools, and finding that we're spending some district money on it, then looking at some of the other tools that were provided for our eighth-grade students from both high schools, some more troubling than others. I think it's a topic I'd like to discuss, and we'll put it on a board agenda down in the future, because I, I think it's something that at least needs a full discussion. As far as the purchaser report, I will move approval of the purchaser report now that I understand what the heck it is.
That will be on our expenditure assumptions.
For, because you asked for, not the full discussion, but because you want to bring it up in another board meeting, I, I do think we need to be consistent in what we are trying to do as a district, and if we, so I'm, I'm kind of pushing back a little bit, Larry, if we have said very clearly, moving forward, we don't want the individual sites going and spending money on their own brochures, we will give an equal amount of money to each site, or not even money, we will produce it in-house, right? The brochure, okay, let me finish, Lydia's already shaking her head, that was our intent, was to eliminate this whole ramping up. I'm for one or the other, but I want it to be consistent, meaning either, we're going to give you this amount of money, but you stick to that amount of money, and that's the amount of money you have to have this event, and the other high school has the same. Similarly, if we're going to produce two glossy magazines that get sent out to prospective students, my understanding was that was also supposed to be either in-house or had the same budget. So, I'm with you, it's either nothing, or if you get a budget, then you stick to it. You can't say, I mean, there was a conversation that at one point, one of the high schools was going to go up to twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars for this recruiting event a few years ago, and Jimmy Buffett was going to play or something. What we need to just be consistent on, so I agree with you, it needs to be discussed, but I want to make sure.
This high school spent twelve thousand dollars on a stage for this event.
Correct.
And that's only one thing they spent.
I understand, yes. Okay, anyway, I mean, it's just, I didn't know what it was, I saw the name.
This came up, where were we? What meeting was that? Lead reps?
This comes up all the time.
All the time.
It came up again at PTA Council, the general council meeting that I just attended. And quite honestly, neither principal loves our current practice either.
All right. So with that, I'll move approval of OA, O3A.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. P is an information item only. Q, board member reports. Well, we have the special ones. You can touch on them in your report. So Malcolm, do you have?
Technology Advisory Committee, did we set that? March, March 25th, we'll have... The email will be going out. So that's it. I don't have anything else to report on.
Okay. Tony?
I have nothing to report. I, I guess, Lydia, I'm going to make sure, I was thinking about this the other day, that I'm assuming you and/or Larry will call a use of school facilities board subcommittee. I'm, I'm not going to be calling that. That's not in my right to do so. So we haven't met. I don't know when we're going to get to it again.
Who else is doing it besides you?
Aaron was on it, I don't know.
It was I replaced him.
Larry's on it now. As soon as you're up to it, Larry, I think it's time we sit and talk about some of the problems.
Okay, so send me an email. Well, I mean, it's either that or get rid of the committee because we haven't done much, so. All right.
But there's still work to be done, right?
There is, I think, work to be done. Okay, so we can address that. Nothing else? Linda? Cool. At 9:31, we're adjourned.
All right.